I pledge, I’m sorry.
I’m sure you’ll miss that quite a bit. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that, Mr. Lawrence. And could the court call the roll, please?
Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Present.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Here.
Councilmember O’Connor?
Here.
Mayor Winter?
Here.
And could the court call now, close the closed session items, please?
Sure. We have conference, we have existing litigation with Airbnb and HomeAway.com Inc. versus the City of Santa Monica. You have one anticipated litigation. Other existing litigations are Allen versus the City of Santa Monica, Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transit Authority Consolidated with Bloxton versus the City of Santa Monica. And then you have Pico Neighborhood Association, Maria Loyah and Advocates from Malibu Public Schools versus the City of Santa Monica. And then you have another existing litigation, which is Kate Scott and James Babinsky versus the City of Santa Monica, and you have one request to speak.
All right, we will now hear from Denise Barton for two minutes. Welcome, Ms. Barton.
Good evening. I would like to make comments on two of the items listed in closed session. First item being 1F regarding shortening the runway and closure of Santa Monica Airport. What do you know, you were so desperate to declare victory to close Santa Monica Airport that in your backroom deals with the FAA, you skipped to public process. But why am I not surprised? Maybe because you don’t seem to like to hear from the public unless it’s the people you’ve planted. Rick Cole and Terrell O’Deary resting their eyes or sleeping does not reflect well upon you as a whole either. Then, of course, there’s item 1E. Here I realize the city’s intention was to keep people from the southern part of the city from holding a city council seat. But another consequence of having at-large elections would be anyone who claims to have a stake in the city can vote in the city’s election, diluting the residents’ votes. So why would it surprise anyone that the city wants to put more and more businesses into the city to further stack the deck in your favor and further dilute the votes of the residents? And to keep this structure in place, you stay in power. So what does that say? Especially since Santa Monica leaders in 1946 adopted at-large elections intentionally to keep minority residents living in the southern part of the city from achieving representation, which can also be seen in a city report commissioned in 1992, which comes to the same conclusion. In addition to the character’s provision prevents not only the city but the Santa Monica Malibu School District from adopting district-based election. The voting system also violates California Voting Act by diluting the votes of lit cities Latinos. It was adopted in 1946, but it doesn’t matter when an intentional racist act occurs. It’s invalid, as interpreted by attorney Kevin Shankman, showing again the illegal lengths you will go to to stay in office and power. Thank you.
And now we’ll look over to the city attorney’s office for an estimate of when we’ll return from closed session.
6:30.
6:30, okay. We will be back for the open part of our meeting at 6:30 PM. All right, good evening, everyone. We are out of closed session, and we will call to order, that would be order, people to my left of me on the dais. The open session of our meeting, and first we’ll have to report out from the city attorney on the closed session proceedings.
Items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1E, and 1F were discussed with no reportable action taken. For item 1D, this is a civil action arising out of injuries sustained by plaintiff Shamika Bloxton when she fell in a pothole on Fifth Street while on duty as a Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority motor coach operator. We’re recommending settlement of this lawsuit for $25,000.
Move settlement.
Second.
All right, moved by McKeon, second by O’Connor. Could we have a roll call vote, settlement of $25,000, Denise?
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemmerich?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember O’Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember O’Deary?
Yes.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes, so that passes unanimously, and does that conclude your report out of closed session?
It does.
It does, okay. And our next item would require the presence of the city manager’s report, or someone else giving that report on item 2A?
I should require the city manager to give the report.
Someone else is giving, but the city manager is supposed to introduce it.
Yeah, that’s what I thought. So, well, let’s call the item.
We have item 2A. It’s the city manager’s report presentation from Climate Corps on the 2017 Climate Corps program.
All right, well, I see the Climate Corps. I see neither the city manager nor the assistant city manager.
You should say it with a mic so it’ll play in the background. So let’s call the meeting on account of he can go home.
Yeah. You know, there’s not anything in the mayor’s playbook about how to deal with this situation. Yeah, yeah.
The item calls for a report from Climate Corps, not a report from the city manager.
Yeah, well, I think at this point...
So we might ask the Climate Corps if they’re prepared to give the report.
Ms. Gutierrez, are you ready to give a report?
We are indeed, but we do want to, do not want to preempt Mr. Cole should he arrive.
Here comes Mr. Cole. Anyway, while we’re stalling here, welcome to all of you, familiar faces. Keep up the good work. Did you have a good time? Who went to the conference with Mr. Gore? That must have been interesting. All right, now we can have a preamble.
I apologize, I was having what diplomats refer to as a frank exchange of views with Ms. Barton.
Well...
It’s my pleasure, Honorable Mayor and council members, to introduce a portion of the bright young people who took to our streets in Santa Monica over this summer, and in fact, the summer before, to put into action two things that are among the council’s highest priorities, in fact, our community’s highest priorities. One is to forge a new model of mobility, and the other is to fight climate change, the man-made portion of climate change. And the support for that effort, we were among the partners that helped fund it, probably the most cost-effective use of taxpayer funds that you will find anywhere in Southern California, because this was fueled by, by more than the stipends that the participants received, it was fueled by their youthful passion and belief in a cause much bigger than themselves. I’ve been inspired by their talent, their caring, and also by the number of folks who are not here, who are off at college, at some outstanding universities, in addition to some of them who are here going to our very fine public school systems, both in high school and at Santa Monica College. So with that introduction, I’d like to introduce you to the Climate Corps, which you’ll hear more about what they were doing this summer and last.
All right, welcome, everyone.
Thank you. So, good evening, fellow creatures of the biosphere. It’s a good opening for us on this hottest of days, I believe 26 degrees above normal in the west side of Los Angeles. And we are here to share with you a brief report. I’m Chris Gutierrez, in my Climate Corps hat, the color of the Dodger blue. And we would like to share with you what we were up to this summer. Myself, the co-chair, and the Climate Corps Program Director, co-chair of CASM, Zachary Geidzik, and Marina Mihalova will give the remarks, and we’ll introduce some of our Climate Corps members, Laura, Amy, fresh from the climate reality, and Sammy, who are here from the local schools. The 2017 program builds on the 2016 pilot, which was actually an idea of Rick Cole and CASM to try to give the climate impact of the expo and all the public transit. We then moved last, from that, to last year’s, last summer’s, to be able to, with the discretionary support of the council, the county, foundations, and individuals, get out in the streets at local events, at popular sites, such as the Pier Concert and the other areas, to try to engage the community. Engaged the community and with 15 high school and college-paid interns, who are out in the street to present a youth presence. We are the only city in the United States that we have identified that has both high school and college in such a corps. With the support of the city and our other partners, we were able to triple our candidate pool from last year in 2016 to 2017. The 15 came from college folks who reached out to us from across the country, and even youngsters in the middle schools and high schools who had heard about the fun and the seriousness of the Climate Corps. I would add the love that they bring both to the healing of the planet and to the community they’re building. Our purpose was to preview with this youth presence and to encourage folks’ climate actions, to preview the underdevelopment of the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan that the city is now taking on. We focused on six, excuse me, on five arenas: transportation, energy, water, food, and zero waste. And that was to capitalize on last year’s Go Samo. We addressed Santa Monica’s general sustainability. The students were trained for two weekends with a lot of networking partners, including city leads from the Division of Mobilities, the Office of Sustainability and the Environment, Big Blue Bus, and a number of other divisions. We sought to have interactive climate conversations, some as short as five minutes, some as long as 30 minutes, and to survey the diverse audiences, multilingual audiences, because you will hear later from our Climate Corps that they are multilingual themselves, Spanish, French, Russian, Turkish. We had many languages at play in the neighborhoods. Most important, we wanted to begin building resiliency in underserved community sectors of our neighbors and other places, because it’s the community relations that are the bases of climate resilience. We sought to have those climate conversations introduce the potential of a survey, and that survey is full of information we are sharing with the city now. We had over 1,200 contacts, contacts as short again as five minutes to 30 minutes, 704 survey respondents, 47% of those were from the local residents. So you can imagine, we had people coming from all over the world at different events, but we did try to focus with the local residents. Of the 704 survey respondents, 256 gave us personal commitments to take on private climate actions that they were not already doing. For instance, 31% said they would start riding their bike more often in the week. Another 30% said that they would ride the Big Blue Bus or another public transit at least once a week. A number also increased their usage of LED light bulbs, which we in fact gave away with the support of some of the funding and our partners. These are examples in these images of the young people at work.
So the other thing, I’m Zachary Geidzik, by the way, one of the other program coordinators. And so the other part of this was, we wanted to really focus on the individual education of the Climate Corps members themselves, as they, last year, were able to focus primarily on transportation. This year, we wanted to focus on a much larger subject area, but also, we wanted to give them the opportunity to really delve deeper into a special project. So here on the slide, you can see this fabulous-looking board that shows different pieces of refuse that were picked up on the Santa Monica Promenade. And then each little one, when you picked up the flap, it would say how long that item took to degrade in a landfill, some as short as three weeks, some as long as 450 million years. And so this was an opportunity for them to really go deep into that. Not just that, but in the corner, they would put the references and the sources, because we know right now, facts need to matter again, and so we made it clear that they had to include that into it. The other part that we really enjoyed was having them be the face of a carbon-neutral community. And, so what does that mean? That’s an interesting statement. Carbon-neutral community is not just individuals taking on certain things, but it’s reinforcing for individuals what things they’re already doing. So for example, if someone’s a vegetarian, talking to them and saying, “Hey, that’s awesome, that is a huge climate impact that you’re doing.” And so it was allowing the validation from community members about what they’re already doing and what other things they could do, such as, “Oh, you’re already vegetarian? Have you thought about taking the Big Blue Bus one day a week? Have you thought about riding your bicycle?” And what were the boundaries that were, are the barriers that are stopping you from taking the Big Blue Bus, or from riding your bicycle more often, or from taking the train? And of course, because it’s 2017, we had to include social media in everything that we did. And so not just in terms of taking fabulous selfies, although we did get some great ones, it was also trying to really talk about what are those individual things that residents can do to really have an impact on the climate, to really make them feel empowered and strong and good about what they’re doing and the differences that they can make in their day-to-day life.
And of course...
I’m actually gonna go back quickly. Hi, my name is Marina. I am the mentor of these beautiful young ladies here, and I’m also the social media manager, which is why I wanted to go back and to respectfully ask that you guys follow us on Twitter and Instagram. It’s my job to ask you. And I would like to move on now to talk to you about the Climate Corps youth being recognized as young leaders. You know, we live in a very extraordinary time. Our everyday decisions such as the food we buy, the cars we drive, the clothes we buy have a distant and often very delayed impact. It’s unprecedented. How do we get a Santa Monica resident to care about, let’s say, a first grader’s life in the low-lying Bangladesh? So this is where our work with Climate Corps plays a key role, because we are that day-to-day conversation. We are that reminder. We are that key resource that connects their everyday life to the bigger issue of climate change. And moving on to more recent events, you know, with the support of Climate Action Santa Monica Steering Committee members, some of you are here, we were able to apply to Al Gore’s climate reality training that took place this past week in Pittsburgh, and myself with Amy and Laura were able to attend. It was an amazing and life-changing experience. And now, as climate reality leaders and Climate Corps members, we have access to Vice President Gore’s slideshow, the very famous slideshow from An Inconvenient Truth, scientific data from the IPCC how-to guides for different acts of leadership, tips for setting up presentations and events, and many more helpful resources. With these tools, along with the tools provided by the City of Santa Monica, the tools provided by our climate reality training, and most importantly, the tools and resources provided by our wonderful mentors and our experience with Climate Action Santa Monica, we are a force of change, and we are at your service. We are here to help you immobilize our youth and our communities, because that is what it takes to win this fight against this global issue of climate change. And I would, you know, I’d like to introduce you to Laura Kosla and to Amy Southern, and if you have any questions to ask us, please feel free. Oh, I’m sorry, and Samantha Garcia. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask us.
Hi, I’m Laura Kosla. I’m a senior at Santa Monica High School. This is...
Hi, I’m Sammy. I’m a junior at Pacifica Christian High School.
Hi, I’m Amy Southern, and I’m a junior at Santa Monica High School.
Well, welcome. We’re all very proud of all you’ve done.
We have the roster that will come up, and you’ll see a variety of young people who are from high schools in University of Washington, across the country, to UC Santa Cruz and other places. And we’re delighted that we can have a multi-age group. Should you have any questions, we are here to answer them.
Councilmembers, have any, anybody have any questions, or we all find the presentation thorough, compelling, and self-explanatory. Looks like we have no questions, and exciting, and dynamic.
We are gonna hopefully take a picture.
That’s what conscience is there for.
All right, great.
Why don’t you come up in front, and we’ll all stand behind you and smile.
Go to the...
And we’ll all smile and say, “We don’t like carbon,” or something like that.
One, two, three. One, two, and three. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you all. We’re done.
Thank you, Climate Corps. And that will move us on to item 2B. Could the court call that item, please?
Item 2B is recognition of Assistant City Attorney Joe Lawrence, and you have one request to speak.
Well, there he is, I recognize him. That’s definitely him. But I think there’s more to this than that. We do, I think we’ll, we’ll start off by hearing from the public before we get into all the other accolades and kudos, and we have one speaker, Barry Rosenbaum.
I’ve not been from this side before. So Barry Rosenbaum, 3117 Pearl Street, resident of the City of Santa Monica for 22 and 1/2 years, former senior land use attorney. I started with the city in May of 1986. Joe started in the same year. Consequently, I had the honor, more aptly characterized as a blessing, of working under Joe during the entirety of my legal career with the city. I say blessing because I always felt so unbelievably fortunate to work for and with him. I want to touch on some of Joe’s character traits, which immediately come to mind as I think about Joe. I know the following truths will be self-evident to almost everyone on this dais and many in this chamber. Joe is brilliant. Joe maintained an active caseload of the most difficult legal issues, whether that be the MTBE litigation of years ago to the quagmire surrounding the airport. He was instrumental in achieving remarkable results for the city in these matters and in a multitude of other cases. Joe is humble. Despite his many outstanding and precedent-setting accomplishments, Joe lawyered with very little ego and was willing to freely share the credit for the accomplishments that he achieved, and that truly would not have happened without him. Joe is generous. Notwithstanding Joe’s supervisory status and formidable personal workload, he was always willing to assist me on the cases and the matters that I was handling, provide extraordinary guidance, and make me feel as if I were a co-equal partner. Joe is ethical. Joe has consistently been a straight shooter with a strong moral compass. Joe is balanced. While work has always been extremely important to Joe, and he’s put in exceedingly long hours, so too is his family, and Joe has an amazing family. Joe is optimistic. When you work together for 30-plus years, you, I’m almost finished, you experience many, you experience many national political cycles. While there have been many highs, there have also been some dreadful lows. Joe has always been able to restore my hope and remind me that the arc of history bends towards justice. Joe, thanks for everything. I love you dearly.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenbaum. So, what I think we’ll do is, I, of course, have a commendation, a lengthy commendation, which I will read and present to Mr. Lawrence, and then I believe Ms. Dilke has a letter from our former city attorney that she will read, and then at that point, the rest of the council can feel free to speak their minds about Mr. Lawrence. And so I’ll start with a commendation, which says, “Whereas Joseph Peter Lawrence, born and raised in New York, obtained a Bachelor of Arts degree from the State University of New York in Buffalo, New York, and a law degree from New York University School of Law, and spent the first decade of his legal career protecting the legal rights of underrepresented groups as an attorney for the American Civil Liberties Union of Southern California and the New Haven Legal Assistance Association, and teaching as a visiting professor and director for the Western Law Center for Disability Rights at Loyola Law School, and an adjunct assistant professor at Loyola and Marist College in New York State, and whereas Joe joined the Santa Monica City Attorney’s Office in 1986 as the Assistant City Attorney, and served twice as a city attorney, leading the city attorney’s office during the darkest hours after the Northridge quake and subsequent rebuilding efforts, and in all these capacities, he has been the quintessential public servant. And whereas Joe, in addition to his supervisory responsibilities, was the lead counsel for the city attorney’s office in a multitude of complicated legal matters, noteworthy of which were his efforts to preserve and to protect the natural resources in Santa Monica, including drinking water, the public beaches, the parks, and the sky. And whereas Joe spearheaded the litigation against oil companies who polluted the city’s groundwater with MTBE and others who polluted it with PCE/TC, and he obtained recoveries of $275 million and $108 million respectively, enabling the city to construct a water treatment facility and restore the city’s groundwater, and advanced legislation that led to statewide and later national phase-out of MTBE. And whereas Joe ended over a quarter century of litigation with the federal government over the Santa Monica Airport through the negotiation of the consent decree recognizing the city’s authority to close the Santa Monica Airport to all aeronautical use for eternity as of December 31, 2028, to shorten the runway to a length of 3,500 feet, to establish municipal fixed base operation services, releasing all deed restrictions, and settling all legal disputes between the city and the federal government about the Santa Monica Airport. And whereas Joe’s work in these areas will benefit the city for generations to come. And whereas Joe is renowned for his breadth of legal knowledge, judiciousness, wit, common sense, and equanimity at all times, treasured by all who have had the good fortune to work with him, and widely acknowledged as being the master of the introduction in legal briefing. And whereas Joe, throughout all of his years with the city attorney’s office, has served as the glue which held the office together, spearheading office celebrations by opening his home each summer, donning a Santa outfit each winter, and commemorating the legal successes of the city attorney’s office in all seasons. And whereas Joe, during his lengthy tenure with the city, attended over 1,000 city council meetings, a record that will not be eclipsed. And whereas Joe is the father of three remarkable sons referred to as the Lawrence Brothers, or the academic superstar sensation, and not to be mistaken for the pop singing sensation, and the grandfather of three beautiful grandchildren. And whereas Joe has used the word whereas more than anyone in the history of Santa Monica. That’s actually not in there, I just wanted to see if you were paying attention. Now, therefore, I, Ted Winter, mayor of the City of Santa Monica, am behalf of the members of the city council to hereby take great pleasure in commending Joseph Peter Lawrence for his 31 years of dedicated service and loyalty to the citizens of Santa Monica, and extend our very best wishes for a happy and rewarding retirement. And here comes the hardware. And now, Ms. Dilke, would you like to read a letter from former city attorney Mutrya, who was unable to make it here due to a health issue?
Thank you. Dear Mayor...
Dear Mayor and Council, tonight you are recognizing Joe Lawrence's service to the city. Unfortunately, a health problem precludes attending your meeting to personally express my deep professional and personal regard for Joe and his decades of work for Santa Monica. For now, this letter must suffice. Joe's outstanding legal abilities and impressive accomplishments are well-known. He was the driving force behind the city's hard-fought and unparalleled success in forcing the major oil companies and other corporations to acknowledge their responsibility for polluting the city's water and to pay for the cleanup. The city's recoveries in those cases are, I believe, unmatched by any other public entity. Joe also led and worked on the team that pursued the appeal in Harris versus City. The California Supreme Court's landmark decision in that case provides much-needed guidance for employers throughout the state. Most recently, Joe's negotiating skills helped bring an advantageous resolution to decades of conflict with the federal government over control of the city land now occupied by the Santa Monica Airport. These are only a few of Joe's legal accomplishments, but they demonstrate the magnitude of his professional contribution to the city. Another aspect of Joe's service is less well-known, his role in managing and building the city attorney's office. As city manager Gould noted years ago, it is a mid-sized law firm and prosecutorial office. As such, the office inevitably faces internal challenges which must be addressed to ensure the best possible ongoing service to the city and the community. Joe played a key role in meeting these challenges. He consistently made himself available to all office members. This went far beyond providing guidance on legal work. Indeed, he was outstandingly kind and generous to his colleagues in many ways. He took the time to hear individuals' concerns and help them work through frustrations. He served as a sounding board for their ideas. In times of trouble, he was always there for his mates. He also took all opportunities to promote collegiality. For example, he was unstunting in devoting his time and resources to ensure the success of office festivities, which were truly festive. In short, he made office members feel, understand, and trust that they were valued members of a team, and he was instrumental in building that team. Joe participated personally and actively in the many hiring decisions made over the last 20 years, and therefore deserves significant credit for forming the talented legal team that serves the city today. Personally, I can't imagine having done my job without the daily benefit of his keen mind, limitless legal ability, creativity, wit, perseverance, strong sense of justice, and excellent heart. When the load's heavy, there's nothing as good as a strong, tough partner. In easier times, what could be better than sharing experience with a partner who is good, funny, kind, and smart? Like the office in the city, I owe Joe more thanks than can be adequately expressed in words. Sincerely, Marsha Jones Moutry.
So, councilmembers, we appear to be convening as the rent control board this evening. The rent control members of the speakers queue. So which council member is Nicole Phillips? Okay. Councilmember McEwen.
Well, I think we can all tell from what the mayor read and from what Marsha Moutry sent us and from what Barry said that people really like you, Joe. You know, we started the night with a presentation from Climate Corps. And in about three years, Santa Monica plans to be water-self-sufficient. That would not be happening without Joe Lawrence because of that settlement with the oil companies that has made that possible. It's one thing, Joe, to be so supremely good at your job that you look like you never break a sweat. You, Joe, are so supremely good at your job, you often look like you're asleep. But what we have all learned is that when Joe is sitting there in a zen-like state with his eyes closed, and we never heard him snore, he's actually thinking, and thinking deeply, and thinking for the benefit of this community. And Joe, not having that heart and that brain up here on the dais with me every couple of weeks, is gonna be a great loss. I'll miss you a lot.
And, oh hey, we got back to our real names. Okay, Councilmember Vasquez, formerly Todd Flora.
I was just getting used to Todd. Joe, you know, I had the opportunity to serve with you when I first got elected in 1990. And actually, then we had our city attorney, it was Bob Myers. And upon his departure, you were my first choice to replace him. Because I know, in working with Bob Myers back in the day, I felt, the city I thought was in real good hands because he was such a sharp legal mind. And I remember Bob telling me one time that a lot of it came from you, discussions and just having the interaction that you did. And I think what was mentioned already is real true, that you always had your heart in the right place for the city of Santa Monica. And I just wanted to thank you for all those years. I left for 18 years, come back, and you're still here. And actually stronger than ever. And I just wish you the best. I know you have some grandkids, having a grandkid, you're gonna enjoy it. And I, I'm actually jealous for you, but thank you for all your hard work.
Mayor Proton Davis.
Well, I can't add a lot to what's already been said, Joe, but let me simply say that as someone who practices law on a daily basis in my day job, as was made so clear, you do make it look easy. It's a hard job, not only from the fact that you have to have command of so many different substantive areas of law and so many procedural requirements, depending on whether we're dealing with the FAA or in the federal courts. But on top of that, as you well know, you serve as a bit of a lightning rod for whatever issue the community seems to be focusing on at the time, whether it's the airport or other sorts of things that are going on. And I think your ability to take criticism with equanimity and your ability to always cut through to the chase and handle everything in the most professional manner possible just has made you incredibly valuable to this community. I'm not sure everyone knows it, but they should. And I also think that they will figure that out when you leave. You will be missed. And wishing you and your family just all the best in everything. So thank you very much.
Councilmember O'Connor.
Right. Well, Joe, you've been here for so long, and Santa Monica's a complex city, and we have complex, complicated challenges, and you have stepped up to the plate to help work out all of them. And you've done it with a steady hand. I think that's one of the best things I can say about you, is that steadiness that you've had. You have the passion, but still, you do it in a way that keeps people calm. At least you've helped keep me calm over the years throughout all the challenges. And you lead with that steadiness, and that is an incredible skill. And I remember the first time I was mayor, thanks to you, I can still say methyl tertiary butyl ether, MTBE, but seeing your leadership in taking on that challenge, which was a major environmental challenge for the city of Santa Monica, and working at it from a number of different perspectives, taking on the oil companies, taking on the polluters, and being, again, steady and steadfast in working hard to make sure that not only was the city compensated for that, but that our natural resources, our wells, our aquifer, were cleaned up. And, you know, the city of Santa Monica and the people of Santa Monica, really, you've served them so well over these 30 years. And I'm gonna miss you dearly, believe me. But I know you're gonna enjoy that next chapter of your life, and I hope you have a wonderful time, but you will be missed. Thank you for your service.
Councilmember O'Dea.
Joe, I want to thank you for the service that you gave to the city. It's, we all owe you a debt of gratitude for not just this legacy that I think is described here by, already, by some of the outcomes you produced, but by the example you've given in public service. And while we'll miss you greatly, it's that example that will last longest, I think. We often are confronted with some really challenging issues, and you're the one who has always stepped up to take them on, own them, and present them in a simpler way that brings people to resolution and brings the community together. So, thank you, and best wishes for your family.
Councilmember Hemlerich.
Well, so, I've known you for a shorter time than, I guess, everyone else on this dais. And we haven't always agreed, but when we haven't agreed, it's always been respectful, and I've always respected your point of view. I think you've always respected mine. And I think that it's that kind of thing that makes collegiality, it's easy when you agree with somebody, it's not always easy when you don't. But I agree with what everyone here said. I think that the next chapter of your life will be rewarding and loving and family-oriented, and I wish you the best.
City Attorney Dilke.
Just wanted to say briefly from our office publicly, and we'll have another opportunity, but that this city community really is better for every attorney that has learned from and worked with you, and we are all very grateful, and it's a legacy that will endure for a very long time.
And City Manager Cole.
Well, this reminds me of the wisdom that everything has been said, but not everyone has had a chance to say it. Joe, on behalf of the city staff, all 2,300 of them, who you've had the chance to protect, to advise, to sometimes guide, and even sometimes chastise, it has been an extraordinary contribution, as everyone on the dais has said. I would add just a couple of personal comments. In the two years I've served as city manager, I've had a chance to interact with you and work with you, and you know that we have not always agreed, and that's really why I want to say this to you personally. I knew it before, but when we flew together to Chicago, where it was about 80 degrees colder than it is today, to negotiate with the Federal Aviation Administration, I saw in person the fortitude, the courage, the wisdom, the tenacity, and the patience that has served the city so well over the last 30 years demonstrated to an extraordinary degree. And that we could reach a historic settlement unprecedented in aviation history on the last week of one administration and in the first week of an incoming new administration that went all the way to the White House, the desk of the White House Counsel, is a tribute to really quite remarkable legal talent, but most of all, personal commitment and dedication. And as a father, I am deeply impressed by who you are as a father and a grandfather. We are not just public servants, we're human beings. And the way in which you've walked through the journey that you and your family have been on have been a personal example to all of us. And I want to thank you for the example you've set in public service and in your personal life. And I also want to ask someone who served with you before to weigh in as well.
So as many of you know, I got the opportunity to start my municipal career here. And over the years, Joe, I think that I have been a better city manager and a better assistant city manager than I ever could have been without your guidance and your assistance and your chastising on occasion, but mostly just teaching me the right way to do things. And I think that I speak on behalf of all of us boomerangs and all of the folks who have gotten the opportunity to work closely with you, that we thank you for your guidance, your smarts, your sense of humor. And for me personally, I just want to thank you for making me a better human being and a better public servant.
So, Joe, this is your last city council meeting of the over 1,000, but it's not your last day on the job, isn't that correct?
It is correct.
So, your last day on the job is November 9?
Yes, 2 and 1/2 weeks.
For those people who didn't get the chance to embrace you, or give you a firm handshake or a parting gift, they still have some time to send you on to retirement, is that correct?
Yes.
Good. So just...
You've learned to take a deposition quite well.
But is there anything you'd like to add at this point? This being your last of over 1,000 city council meetings.
Yes, and on that point, that reminded me of, over the years, more recent years, when I would run into him at a few city council meetings, ex-council member and ex-mayor Jim Kahn, we would talk briefly and he would, and Reverend Jim Kahn, would say hello to me and then would say, "Gee, you've been at a lot of these meetings, you must have the hardest ass in Los Angeles." Now, now, he's a reverend, and Lane went to divinity school. I don't know if that's, you know, old or New Testament talking, but anyway, I have been at a lot of meetings, and sometimes, if I haven't snored, it's been an oversight. But you all have been very, very, very kind in your remarks, and I appreciate them. And as other people have said at their retirement events, you know, you feel at these events as though, you know, you're witnessing your own funeral or something. But anyway, thank you so, thank you so very much. You know, years ago, and now, when I think about it, it was a generation ago that I started work here. And I came to work for Santa Monica with an atypical background. You know, I had a public interest background representing low-income people back east and then disabled people and others here. And I wrestled with the notion back then of whether it made sense for somebody with my background and interests to come to work for a government, even if the government was the city of Santa Monica. And I didn't know, and I actually had, I had actual conversations with people who were very familiar with the city, and the conversations were, can you actually do good? Can you do justice if you're working for the city of Santa Monica? And that was the question I wrestled with. And I can unequivocally say that the answer, whether you're a lawyer or you're an analyst, that the answer is absolutely yes. And that's a tribute to this city council, that's a tribute to the city manager's office, to prior city councils, that in fact, doing the people's business, while, yeah, there's a lot of minutia and there's a lot of things that maybe you do that sometimes you don't really particularly want to do, but that on balance, you can advance the public good, you can endeavor to make sure that a government operates with integrity and justice to the extent, to the best extent that it can. And so that has been a rare opportunity that you've given me to do that. And these other things, you know, I remember speaking to people, they say, "Joe, you've been involved in this project, and this project, and this project." You must be bored when you get to, you know, work on a contract. And as I would tell people, you know, I don't make up those, I didn't make up those disputes, they just happened, and I just happened to get involved in them, and it just, whatever played out, played out. But that's the uniqueness of Santa Monica. Other communities have certainly dealt with significant environmental issues, for instance, you all mentioned, or many of you mentioned environmental issues. And for one reason or another, they've been unsuccessful, not because they didn't want, not because they didn't care, but because they lacked resources, they lacked commitment, and which is something that this city has both resources, blessed with resources, but also blessed with commitment. And again, that's a tribute to you all and to your prior city councils. And I want to acknowledge there's folks who are here, I want to make two acknowledgements. First of all, thank you for your comments about me being a father and a parent and whatever, and a grandfather, but to be a father, you need to have a mother. And in my case, my wife is present, I'd like Mary to stand. I should say, my wife of 40 years and 1 month, a remarkably, remarkably, remarkably talented person across the spectrum, whether, you know, in our personal lives with our family, but also in her professional life, a remarkably gifted person. And then I would also like to acknowledge the members of the city attorney's office who are present, who maybe want to take a bow. Please, stand. And so I'd like to thank them for their service, many of whom work, you know, in obscurity and who never get to appear at a city council meeting, and maybe that's for the best, as far as their... far as they're concerned, but who, without whom actually none of this stuff that is done more publicly could happen. So thank you all very much, it's been, you know, my pleasure and honor to work with each and every one of you. And so with that, thank you, and yes, I'll be around for a couple more weeks, so, but you've all been very, very kind, and I greatly, greatly appreciate it.
All right, let's wrap this up with one more big round of applause for Joe Lawrence.
All right, well, I'm afraid we now need to get into the more pedestrian parts of our This is the moment for the city clerk to interrogate us.
So is there any council member who's traveled since the last council meeting?
Seeing nobody else in the queue, I should say that I did indeed travel, I left last Monday evening for Seoul, Korea, and returned Saturday evening. I attended a conference held by the OECD, which is the Organization of Economic Cooperation Development, which actually was formed after World War II as part of the Marshall Plan. It's a group that's been, got a little bit moribund, but has been rejuvenated by the former Finance Minister of Mexico, Angel Garcia, and this conference was about climate change as inclusive growth, and it was attended by mayors from around the world, like there were mayors from every continent except Antarctica, which is understandable, and for some reason the Australians were absent, but otherwise there was mayors from around the world. I was honored to ask to speak on a panel before all of the mayors, the first day on climate change and inclusive growth, I was joined by the mayor of Seoul and mayors from Morocco, Mauritania, and Costa Rica. Sort of what we discussed is whether or not sometimes policies to mitigate climate change might actually work against our goals of inclusive growth. An example might be is if here in Santa Monica, we, in the interest of encouraging use of mass transit and other modes of mobility, we raise the cost of parking, that puts an unfair burden on lower-income households, so our response has been, among other things, to raise the minimum wage, so that lower-income households have more money. A grander example might be is something like the Expo line, you know, there's been instances where introducing new light rails created gentrification and raised housing costs, and our policies have been, A, to focus our housing development in areas where we're not displacing existing households, and to have our very robust inclusionary zoning. I was also on a second breakout panel on gentrification and joined by mayors from Nepal and Mauritania, so just giving an example of what this is, a global conference of mayors. It was fascinating in that, obviously, all these countries have very different resources, different challenges from climate change, and different challenges in how to deal with income inequality, but we all shared a commonality of trying to address those challenges. And I was very optimistic about, while here in the United States, we might not be doing as much as we could on those fronts, that certainly throughout the rest of the world, those progressive efforts to both mitigate the impact of too much carbon atmosphere and of income inequality are robustly being pursued by other cities around the world. So it's quite fascinating, it was interesting to say the least to be in a country where all the subway stations are marked as bomb shelters and you find gas masks in your closet in your hotel room, given the current political tensions there, but I emerged unscathed and I'm back here, so that's my report of my travel. And now the clerk could call the consent calendar.
We have the consent calendar, all items will be considered and approved in one motion unless removed by a council member for discussion, and you have no request to speak.
All right, do any council members wish to remove any of the items on the consent calendar? Councilmember O'Connor?
Yes, I need to remove 3B, I'll have to recuse myself on that one because I work with one of the firms submitting the information.
All right, now entertain a motion on the remainder of the...
I'll move the remainder. Second.
All right, moved by O'Connor, second by O'Day, for the remainder of, all the items on the consent calendar, except item 3B. See no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes. And while we're waiting for Councilmember O'Connor to leave the room, does anybody want to update me on the World Series game?
Spoiler alert.
All right, and now that Councilmember O'Connor's left the room, I'd like to move item 3B.
Second.
All right, moved by McKeon, it's second by O'Day, pass item 3B, can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember O'Day?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamerich?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes, so that passes unanimously, and hopefully Councilmember O'Connor will be on her way back, and can the clerk call the next item, please?
Next we have item 4A, give me just a second. Item 4A is a study session regarding labor peace agreements, and you currently have 31 requests to speak, so I'll bring them to you.
And it looks like Mr. Harris will begin the staff report, welcome Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Mayor, council members of the public, good evening. I'm Jason Harris, the city's economic development manager. Before you tonight is the study session on labor peace. My presentation in conjunction with the staff report provides information on the subject of labor peace agreements, or LPAs, including the policy issues, potential impacts to small businesses, and policy options for council consideration. The staff report addresses the various legal issues related to this topic. Staff seeks the council direction on requiring labor peace agreements for city-owned properties with food service operations. Very briefly for background, the city owns various types of real estate, including buildings, kiosks, parking structures, and parking lots that are not currently in use for municipal purposes. These properties are leased or licensed for commercial uses that generate rental revenues and provide community and visitor-serving amenities. In total, the city manages over 100 properties, of which 27 are leased or licensed to food service operators, or that have a component of food services a part of their operations. A summary listing of the 27 businesses and the square footage of their respective operations is also included in the staff report. The list does not include outdoor dining licenses. The staff report specifically focuses on food service tenants that lease or license property from the city, and does not address the nonprofit tenants or other types of commercial tenants. The majority of leased or licensed city-owned properties used for commercial purposes are located primarily in four areas of the city, of which the downtown, pier, and airport are governed by formal leasing guidelines. To help provide additional context of these businesses, the city evaluated their operations by revenue and number of employees. The Small Business Administration defines a non-manufacturing small business as having less than 7.5 million in annual revenue, and the city's and state's minimum wage laws define a small business of having 25 or fewer employees. Under both of those definitions, the majority of the city's food service tenants would be classified as small businesses, and are also considered local independent non-formula To understand the city's proprietary interest in city property used for commercial purposes in terms of revenue, the city received approximately 7.6 million in lease revenue in fiscal year 1617. Of the 7.6 million, approximately 4.5 million, or 59%, was generated by food service tenants. The city first adopted labor peace guidelines nearly 15 years ago, when the Santa Monica Pier and Leasing and Licensing Guidelines were adopted in March of 2003, and then several months later, the Downtown Leasing and Licensing Guidelines equally adopted the same provision. The labor peace provisions in the Pier and Downtown Guidelines clarify the city's proprietary interest and include a labor peace provision that prohibits all city tenants from engaging in practices that impede tenants' employees' ability to organize and contract with the labor organization for the purpose of collective bargaining. In March of 2015, council directed staff to incorporate a labor peace agreement requirement in all airport leases to mirror the labor peace agreement requirement for concessionaires and service providers at Los Angeles World Airports, commonly referenced as LAX. In August 2016, council directed staff to amend the existing labor peace provisions in the Leasing and Licensing Guidelines for the Downtown and Pier to incorporate the LAX labor peace agreement requirement. At that time, council also directed staff to evaluate potential impacts of the proposed labor peace agreement requirement on small food service businesses. LPAs, labor peace agreements, vary depending on what terms are agreed to between a particular business and a labor organization. In general, labor peace agreements provide workers with rights to organize in the workplace while the participating labor organization commits to forego engaging in picketing, boycotting, or striking. Courts have upheld the inclusion of labor peace agreement provisions in state and local government contracts where such provisions are included as a narrowly tailored means of avoiding disruption of government projects and revenues. Cities that enact labor peace ordinances include New York, San Francisco, Baltimore, Pittsburgh, and Washington DC. In the LAX labor peace model, concessionaires and service providers are required to enter into a labor peace agreement with any employee organization that requests one. In the event a business and a labor organization are unable to agree to a labor peace agreement, the LAX policy also includes a mediation process to help resolve any dispute between the parties. Staff presented the proposed labor peace agreement requirement to the Santa Monica Pier Board, Downtown Santa Monica Inc. Board, and the Chamber of Commerce Governmental Affairs Committee earlier this year. In addition to the businesses and residents, representatives from a labor organization attended several of the discussions, providing feedback on concerns and suggestions. In the discussions, the city tenants expressed concerns about the uncertainty related to the legal, administrative, and operational cost associated with negotiating a labor peace agreement, and concerns were raised that a labor organization would have unilateral leverage in negotiating a labor peace agreement if it is a condition of entering into a lease with the city. Without any contingencies or alternative approaches to resolve disagreements, in negotiating terms of a labor peace agreement, concerns were raised that the requirement could dissuade many smaller businesses from pursuing leasing opportunities with the city. Stakeholders asked whether a threshold could be developed in which smaller, small businesses would not be subject to the LPA provision based on either the number of employees, the square footage of the lease area, or by the type of operation such as mobile food carts. In addition, some stakeholders suggested that the city develop a standard form or template for labor peace agreements to address the uncertainty of the possible terms. Alternatively, advocates expressed that labor peace provisions would help businesses prevent disruptive labor conflicts, which could negatively affect revenues and customer loyalty. There are a number of alternative approaches and concepts that council could consider in providing direction to staff. The first option for consideration is to update the leasing guidelines to require labor peace agreements for food service operators in all city-owned properties and adopt a policy to include the LPA requirement for city properties not covered under the airport, downtown, or pier leasing guidelines to ensure consistent policies and practices with respect to food service operators. Adopting the LAX labor peace agreement requirement also includes the dispute resolution process utilizing the services of a mediator. Another option is the adoption of the LPA requirement with guidelines, and that the city provide as much clarity and detail as possible with respect to requirements and process, such as a template. However, as noted in the staff report, given that the city is not a party or signatory to a labor peace agreement, insertion of the city's specific desires may be problematic. The third option for council's consideration is to adopt the labor peace agreement requirement, but establish a threshold for which businesses with less than 25 employees would be exempt. This would recognize the challenges of small food service businesses. A fourth alternative is the adoption of the labor peace agreement requirement with a no-strike pledge, similar to the policy adopted by Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. Under any of the first four alternatives, staff recommends that mobile food service carts and outdoor dining licenses be exempted from labor peace requirements, given the nature of the licenses. Council may also consider keeping the current labor peace provisions as-is, given that the provisions in the leasing guidelines prohibit city tenants from engaging in practices that impede an employee's ability to organize and contract with the labor organization for the purpose of collective bargaining. The city has not experienced work stoppages in any of the city properties, and the impacts of labor peace agreements on rental income in small businesses is unknown and unpredictable at this time. The sixth alternative is that council could adopt the state of California's approach, requiring a statement by the applicant that it intends to execute a labor peace agreement or is in the process of doing so. Lastly, council could eliminate the existing labor peace provisions in the leasing guidelines in recognition that the National Labor Relations Act provides employees with protections and prohibits employers from taking any adverse employment action against employees who engage in union activities. Based on the council direction, staff would return to council for formal approvals to amend the airport, downtown, and Santa Monica Pier leasing guidelines and to implement any requirement or conditions prospectively in forthcoming requests for proposals, leases, and licenses. This concludes staff's presentation. Council's requested to provide direction at this time regarding requiring a labor peace agreements in the city's leasing guidelines and policies for city-owned properties with food service operations. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Council, do we have any questions at this time?
Seeing none, I think then we'll dive into the public testimony. For those who haven't been through this routine before, if I call your name, if you're the first, please come up to the podium and speak, and if I've called your name after that, please line up against that wall over there and be ready to speak in the interest of moving efficiently. First speaker will be Donald Tavy, followed by John Groedor, Hunter Hall, Richard Chalker, and Eddie Sevilla.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Donald Tavy, I'm the co-owner and president of Yol Kings Head, an institution in Santa Monica that has served locals and expats and visitors since 1974. We bought the restaurant in June 2005 and have witnessed a huge revitalization of downtown Santa Monica over the last dozen years or so. Since the Expo arrived, we've seen a huge uptick in foot traffic. This is my first time speaking in front of the council, because I'm kind of concerned about this labor peace agreement, or at least patio frontage along Santa Monica Boulevard sidewalk communicates a lot of great things to the passerby. We've got something unique and authentic to offer, and we draw a good mix of locals and tourists, as well as people who work downtown and want to grab a bite before heading home. I've worked in the industry for many years and understand that mutual respect is the secret sauce of good restaurant teamwork, that as well as removing the many barriers possible between management and the energetic staff, employees who are at the heart of Yol Kings Head, that helps keeps customers coming through the door. It's a pub after all, family kind of thing, family-owned, family-operated business, so it's understandable that I'm very concerned about the proposed LPA requirements, and I'm particularly troubled that very few people, especially restaurateurs, are familiar fully with the implications of labor peace. I hope that the council staff agree that it's the city's responsibility to explain to us in this room and to everybody listening what labor peace will lead to, which restaurants will be impacted, what does the term "card check" mean, who will have access to employee information, how might labor peace lead to changes to the way we hire great employees and dismiss those whose heart aren't in the job? How will labor peace manifest itself in employee paychecks, and what will it add to the bill at the end of the meal? It's been a difficult few years in their industry, lots of new competition in the area, wage increases, ACA costs, to name a few. Labor peace, if implemented, might be a bridge too far for many small businesses. I know that members aren't allowed to ask questions, that's it? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a John Groedor? If not, we'll proceed to Mr. Hall. Welcome, Mr. Hall.
Hi, how are you all doing? Thank you for having me. Dear city council members, so I write to you, I'm speaking today on behalf of the Main Street Business Improvement Association as the new executive director and an active participant in the community. Our board encourages you to reject the proposed labor peace agreement requirement, as we believe they would significantly harm our local independent restaurants and would damage the unique character of our community. We would understand the requirement if there were a history of protests or bad relationships between employees and local... between employees and local food service establishment, but that's not the case. Santa Monica's local restaurants, and especially those we know on Main Street or elsewhere in Santa Monica on city property, have a history of being great employers. As somebody who's personally interacted with many small businesses and every single restaurant in Santa Monica regularly over the past two years, I can tell you that every F&amp;B operator I know is still scrambling to try and figure out how to best adjust to the unprecedented and rapid increase in labor costs. There have already been several closures which you've heard about, and there will be many more. On top of that, Santa Monica is still grappling with its reputation as a difficult city to do business in, so why would we want to make that worse, especially when businesses are already struggling to make ends meet? The biggest issue with LPA requirements, as with most things, are the unintended consequences. One example is that every restaurant we've spoken to that has a current patio dining permit would begrudgingly opt to not renew it when the time came to do so if the LPA would affect them, and eventually Santa Monica might be a city without any sidewalk patio dining. Expanding on that, what will become of the pier? Do we want it to be so prohibitively expensive to low and middle-income families? Slowly but surely, families with limited means would decide to go elsewhere. It's already very difficult to afford to live here, and a prohibitively expensive pier would just make it one more thing that sends our customers elsewhere. Further, Main Street businesses are dependent on customers who are attracted to the unique character of Santa Monica's independent businesses. If the pier and our downtown see more vacancies to begin, they will only attract corporate tenants, and that's a serious threat to Main Street. LPAs make sense at LAX where guaranteed uninterrupted operation is necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Hall.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chalker, welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I'm Richard Chalker, and my family and I operate Perrys at the Beach for the last 41 years. I'm going to list a few of the regulatory requirements that we currently operate under. Our city leases rather rigorous, minimum wage, which is still playing out, labor board, ACA, Board of Health, and of course, workman's comp. These all speak to the condition of the employee. You know, with all of these different requirements, we really feel that we're already de facto unionized. I was brought up with the union, the Teamsters. I've fought for social justice all my life in the Green Party, as one example. So I say to my brothers and sisters in the union, Local 11, that you take your zeal and your passion to unionize and find an industry that needs your assistance, because Santa Monica is not that place. And in conclusion, I would just say, the union has put out a solution to a problem that does not exist, at least in our mind. And again, we have operated as a company in the most compassionate and sensitive of ways without any outside requirements on us. We do this because of social justice, because this is our value system, and I hope you understand that this is just not a necessary requirement in our lease, and it profoundly will affect us on some financial basis as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone named Eddie Sevilla jumping up to speak, so we'll call a few more names. Philip Cummins, Greg Marina, Garrett Gerson, Mike Grunig, and Chris Veloski. Is there a Philip Cummins? And not, we will go to Mr. Marina. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, honorable counsel, good to see you here. First, thank you for listening to us and for your direction to staff to dig into this matter. As some of you know, my wife and I took over our family business in town. We're celebrating 40 years as a local family business in Santa Monica. My wife and I are from Santa Monica and most certainly for Santa Monica. I quote Hamilton in saying that "we're sowing seeds in a garden we'll never see." My primary issue is uncertainty. Uncertainty surrounding this matter is of paramount concern for me, my family, and my city. How do I support my family? What will happen to our family business? And how will this policy impact restaurants in the city? Prior to running our family business, I spent 15 years in financial operations, valuing opportunities, moving forward or not. Why not move forward with a restaurant in Santa Monica including a potential labor issue? Because you cannot create a plan to succeed when the largest operational and financial factor, which is labor, is immeasurable. What will our city look like after current leases expire or material changes to existing leases are presented? Who will make up our restaurant demographic? Deep pockets? Son of man? Santa Monica will be subject to those who can afford random outcomes and support the necessary infrastructure, or worse, in trying to retain our culture in non-formula businesses. Small businesses will underestimate the risk of operations and fail, resulting in turnover and empty storefronts. Young, scrappy, hungry entrepreneurs like my family will look elsewhere. In the end, I fear our public places will be homogeneous, void of character, and worst of all, will be just like every other city. Please take great care in your decision. The soul of our industry and reputation of our city is at stake. As always, I'm here to help and provide information to support your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett Gerson.
Hi, good evening. I don't have anything prepared, I just wanted to be here representing my family. We've operated the Victorian in Santa Monica for several years, but really here in support of the Main Street Merchants Association, Chamber, and the other restaurants and leaseholders. Always here to help, but you know, I think something to ask is each and every one of you council members, is this really necessary and is it a good idea? Thank you.
Mr. Grunig.
Good evening, Mayor Winter, City Council members. Mike Grunig, 2920 Nielsen Way. California has the highest income tax in the country at 13.3%. Businesses are fleeing California like rats off a sinking ship and going to business-friendly climates like Texas and Nevada. First, you foist a $15-an-hour minimum wage with benefits upon a non-receptive business. Then you pass an ordinance allowing a select group of protesters to rabble-rous in front of businesses at ungodly hours, causing mayhem as they did in front of the Spitfire Grill. Now you want to orchestrate, manipulate, and subjugate businesses into kowtowing to a vocal minority of almost exclusively non-residents to curry political favor and enhance reelection efforts. Businesses have not had enough, but too much. This is a manufactured crisis predicated on a ruse about potentially losing revenue, which we all know is Alice in Wonderland talk. Where is the great human cry from your constituents? How many of the voters who elected you even know what you're doing, much less approve of it? Do you think people like to pay more because you artificially dictate the rules of business? Why not poll them to see what their thoughts are? It would be edifying. When have we ever witnessed a single instance where more regulation leads to enhanced business and a thriving economy? An ounce of laissez-faire goes a long way to encouraging business development. I had a small business in Santa Monica for almost 20 years, and I know Councilmember O'Day has as well. Has either of us benefited from more red tape and intrusion? Mayor Winter and I both walk the self-same Main Street, sidestepping homeless bodies and sleeping bags and passing by each week yet another shuttered business. There is a tipping point in the business community, and you are putting your finger on the scales against them. Your first duty is to your constituents and not union instigators. Labor peace is an oxymoron. I'd like to think that my words resonate with you, but unfortunately, as my grandmother Callahan said, "A man convinced against his will is of the same opinion still." Thank you.
Thank you to you and your grandmother. Ms. Veloski, hold on one second while I call a few more names. Daniel Polk, Lisa Gainer, Colby Goff, Laura Houston, and Harriet Bond. Welcome, Ms. Veloski.
I'm Chris Veloski. I'm president of the Pier Lessies Association. I've lived in Santa Monica.
Ms. Veloski, could you pull the mic down a little so you can speak? Thank you.
I've lived in Santa Monica for 60 years, or excuse me, since 1960. This past September, I celebrated 52 years as a businessperson on the Santa Monica Pier, providing authentic and peer experiences to visitors and our residents alike. I'm here tonight to lend my strong support to our pier restaurants that are such a large part of the city's identity, and ask you to reject the labor peace agreement proposal that's before you tonight. The pier has experienced some tough times in the past. We've weathered economic downturns and uncertainties. We bounced back from the disastrous storm of 1983, and now we face another serious challenge. It will affect the very existence of our restaurant's LPA. Bringing all our restaurants under the LPA rule would place an extreme hardship on the businesses that historically operate, excuse me, on a narrow margin. I strongly encourage you to take no action regarding the LPA in the city. These restaurants are working hard to make operational changes to cover new minimum wage, and at the same time, they're handling the increasing cost of workman's comp and healthcare. These are good employees, straight shooters, who care about their waiters, bussers, and cooks. You know them, and they want to stay on the pier. I'm passionate about the pier. I ask you to be passionate about it, too. Please do what's best for our workers, owners, and customers and decide against adopting the LPA. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Polk. How about Lisa Gainer? Welcome.
Mayor and council members, my name is Lisa Gainer. I'm a longtime resident of Sunset Park, the mother of three kids, all of whom went to Santa Monica schools. I'm an avid supporter of local businesses. In short, I'm a good Santa Monican. I ditched the World Series tonight for the city council meeting because I feel very strongly about the item you're discussing. I live and vote in Santa Monica, so I make it my business to be well-informed, but this labor peace agreement issue came out of nowhere. I opened the Santa Monica Daily Press and found this article. I was really shocked by what happened at the Spitfire Grill. I was dumbfounded that the Hotel Workers Union would go after restaurants with city leases. I dug a little further and was very unhappy to learn how far along this process has gone and how many of my favorite local restaurants were in the union's crosshairs. Like all of them, I'm talking about the sacred cows like Back on the Beach and Shea J and the cool new places with sidewalk dining and coffee places. I won't go on a boring rant about transparency, but this is a big deal. You're entering into a solemn relationship that will affect all of us. When were we supposed to meet the bride? Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Goff.
Good evening, Mayor Winter and council members. My name's Colby Goff. I'm one of the general partners of the Rustic Canyon Family of Restaurants, which has operated unique local restaurants in Santa Monica since 2006. I'm also a resident of three different neighborhoods, of Santa Monica neighborhoods, over the last 22 years, so kind of wearing two hats tonight. Today, Santa Monica benefits from the familiar culture of a close-knit community with a small-town feel, despite being surrounded by the Los Angeles metropolis. By design, we're an increasingly walkable community, which is great for both neighborhoods and boulevards where independent restaurants thrive. As residents, we patronize our favorite restaurants because they are the places that make us feel welcome and part of a unique seaside town. Santa Monica's locally-owned restaurants have created a special ecosystem, fostered by the direct relationship of the ownership and management with front-of-the-house, back-of-the-house staff, neighbors, patrons, local charities, and of course, the council members as well. Our progressive values and this culture that we've created are the strongest way to establish and reinforce good working conditions. The restaurants that lease city land bring a vibrant sea to our sidewalks, city-owned beach property, and the airport. The imposition of LPAs would ultimately disintermediate ownership from team members and would negatively alter the familial culture that Santa Monica restaurants have created. Restaurants and retailers are facing incredible headwinds brought on by market changes in recent local regulation over the past 18 months. Give Santa Monica's unique locally-owned restaurants the opportunity to absorb these changes and study whether or not there is a systemic problem in Santa Monica restaurants that really warrants an LPA and what it would lead to. It will change Santa Monica, the Santa Monica restaurant community. Please choose number five on city staff's lists and don't make any changes to the current LPA language that already exists in city leases today. Thank you for your time and your service, and go Dodgers.
Thank you. And you must be either Harriet Bond or Laura Houston.
Bond.
Bond. Well, let me just see, is there a Laura Houston here? All right, then hold on, Ms. Bond, while I call a few more names, and then you'll have your time. Marion Nataff, Liz Rubin, Amira McCullough, Laurel Rosen, and Matt Miller. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, City Council members. I just have a couple of things to say about item 4A, and I'll be really quick. First, I read this morning's article in the Daily Press. My head pounded when I read the words "no justice, no peace" that were chanted in front of a local restaurant. The rhetoric of confrontation has no place in a situation like this. No justice, no peace is a phrase that should be reserved to resonate and inspire only when a situation is a dire one. Second, I'm not anti-union. Labor unions serve an important purpose when the scale and type of industry warrants their involvement. Frankly, it will take a whole great deal more to persuade me and a lot of Santa Monicans that this potential arrangement between the city and Local 11 is necessary, fair, or wise. I recommend that you keep things as they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Marion Nataff.
My name is Marion Nataff, and I'm a resident of Santa Monica. This is my first time speaking to the council. I'm simply going to ask you to reject the labor peace agreement proposal now. The city is completing something extraordinary, entering into a relationship with an outside entity, in this case, a labor union, without consulting the citizens of Santa Monica. No one community meeting, not one workshop. Where was the outreach? Those lease revenues belong to us. We need to know how they're being regulated. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Liz Rubin. All right, Amira McCullough. How about Laurel Rosen? Let's see, someone that looks a lot like Laurel Rosen. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So, I'm Laurel Rosen, as you said, president of the Chamber. And first of all, thank you for being here on game night. And so, over the years, I have represented the Chamber on various and scores of planning issues, including the downtown community plan, and earlier this year, and then on numerous other significant development projects, some of which have had appropriate relationships with Unite here. So you have in your packets a letter that the Chamber submitted regarding the labor peace agreement, which you'll be exploring tonight. I want to elaborate on two aspects of the labor peace issue that we touched on in the letter. First, it's the issue of fairness. The Chamber and many of our members are extremely concerned about the competitive disadvantaged labor peace agreements would create for independent restaurant operators who lease city property. Restaurants that operate on private land would not be subject to the LPAs and would not be able to pursue their business objectives unencumbered by additional costs and rules imposed by outside third parties. So I worked for hospitality for over 20 years, many hotels and many small restaurants, including the lobster restaurant, which I helped open and run for nine years. I also hired many of the employees who are still there today. We prided ourselves on being a family, and we still do. I still feel part of that family. And an LPA would greatly affect the relationships between management, owners, and employees, and impact this really friendly atmosphere that we were proud that we created over the years. So second, just as important, I ask you to carefully consider the effect the LPA would have on the value-driven, long-term vision of Santa Monica that we celebrate every year at our State of the City event. The small, independent restaurants that lease city land are integral to the community cohesiveness and a vital part of Santa Monica's unique brand. I'm going to jump ahead and just say that we wish you would consider all the unintended consequences of these actions. We feel they're shortsighted, and we hope you reject them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And after Matt Miller, we'll hear from Sarah Hamilton, Wes Hooker, Adam Fitzpatrick, John Calorizio. Welcome, sir.
Hi, my name is Matt Miller. It's my first time speaking to the council. I found out about the LPA issue because I'm an investor in several Santa Monica restaurants, but I'm here because I'm a patron of far more Santa Monica restaurants, and I'm really worried about what this would do to... worried about what this would do to that community. And so I'd never heard of an LPA before, so I had to do some research over the last several days to understand what this was all about. And, you know, I would echo the sentiment I've heard several times already tonight, and I had down in my notes, which is, this is a solution to a problem that I don't think exists here. I'm a big believer in labor unions. I think they serve a crucial purpose in our society and our economy in places where there's a dominant employer or group of employers, and where labor needs collective representation. This just doesn't fit that. Santa Monica has hundreds of independent restaurants, and as far as I can tell, there's no problem. It even sounds to me as though the labor market in Santa Monica is pretty tight, and if a restaurant employee doesn't like where he or she is working, it sounds as though they can go across the street and find another job pretty easily. So to me, it seems as though this is frankly an effort by the labor union to extort something from restaurants, and everybody loses here except for the labor union. From what I can tell, restaurants would have greater costs and greater regulatory burden and oversight. The city would have greater costs, which means cost for taxpayers, and it means more work for you guys, distracting you from important issues that you should be dealing with. And most important to me, it's that a lot of restaurant employees who don't need union representation would end up signing up for it and having union dues subtracted from their paycheck. They don't need to hand that money over to someone else. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hi. Thank you for being here tonight. I'm here tonight to request that Santa Monica restaurant owners be allowed to communicate directly with their employees so that they can work together with them to create the best possible work environment. While I'm not involved in the restaurant business, I am a frequent patron of many of the restaurants here in Santa Monica. I was born and raised here, and I've lived most of my life here. I'm deeply committed to this city. I love and I want for Santa Monica to maintain that unique Santa Monica, those unique Santa Monica qualities that make it distinct of any other city in Southern California. Santa Monica has become a destination for many, and a lot of that is due to those gathering spaces and those restaurants that many come to. Over the years, we have all seen many restaurants come in and out of the city, and we've seen many come in and stay and flourish here and reinvest in the community. One example is the Rustic Group. They came in and they exceeded expectations, not only in the success of their restaurants, but also in the way they've taken great care of their employees. I know this because I'm friends with several of these employees, and many of them are my neighbors, and they are members of our community. I also know this because Rustic has also invested in the upward bound organization, and they've also taken great efforts to increase those healthcare benefits for their employees. As a Santa Monican and as a patron of these restaurants, I so appreciate the great care that they take of those who work with and for them. And I know that there are many other restaurants in Santa Monica that share those similar priorities. And my appeal tonight is that you allow them to continue to do the good work that they are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Wes Hooker Paletti, providing hospitality at my downtown restaurant for the past 26 years, and my sister café for the past 11 years. Mandating LPAs would compromise the economic sustainability of my business and would likely push me out of the local market. But tonight, I'd like to touch upon two less tangible unintended effects of LPAs. Decades ago, when I decided to open my dream restaurant where I could be of service to a neighborhood, I looked at 40 to 50 locations throughout Los Angeles, including Beverly Hills, Westwood, Hollywood. But what attracted me like a magnet to Santa Monica was the welcoming hand that the city extended my way, both at a staff level and at a political level. The executive director of the Bayside District made himself available to address my concerns before I signed the lease with my landlord. And a gentleman by the name of Zane passionately worked out glitches between the prominent construction plans and the restaurant construction plans. Today, an LPA mandate would have the opposite effect of the welcome extended to me in 1989, and going forward will likely scare away smaller local tenants. Consider also the conflict that a collective bargaining agreement would have on the simple nature of a family business, which is a team of owners and workers sitting at the same table. In this day and age, independent restaurateurs embark in new ventures, not because of the industry's known marginal returns, but because of their innate passion for hospitality and people in general. They enjoy being of service to customers, to their workforce, and attract employees who prefer to be led by on-premise, hands-on owners instead of belonging to a larger corporate business or a labor organization. I hope that you will consider helping independent local family restaurants remain in the mix that you built over several decades.
Thank you. Adam Fitzpatrick. Oh, we have a question. Mr. Hooker, come back. Councilmember Vazquez has a question.
When I went to visit your restaurant, what's the size of your employee base there?
It varies between the shoulder season and summer, so we go from a staff of about 35 to, we've had staffs of about 60, 65 between the two businesses in summer.
In the summer?
Yeah.
But the main restaurant, even in the peak, what does that have?
In a peak now is roughly 40 to 50 employees.
And what's the range, I think you gave me the range, of what you pay, you know, from your dishwasher all the way to your manager there, roughly an hour?
Well, we pay market rates. Entry-level position is the minimum wage, and then there are steps that of about, you know, first step maybe is 50 cents, and there's a dollar raise, and then maybe $2 raises that are dependent on seniority and productivity, and many other factors, so flexibility and...
And now with the living wage in place, you're on track to get to that once it hits the 15 mark, right?
Well, the living wage has, this most recent increase in minimum wage is very challenging. We're trying, we're still trying to figure out how to absorb it. The problem that we find is that although the cost of producing the same product that we produced before is higher, there isn't a bigger market for it. As a matter of fact, there's increased competition, so we're dealing with, keeping our prices where they are, we're dealing with flat or shrinking sales sometimes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hooker, don't go away. Councilmember Himmler has a question.
So just a follow-up on your employee count. So the 40 to 50 number in your main restaurant, is that full-time employees?
I would have, to give you an intelligent answer, I would have to calculate the full-time equivalent of employees, but within 10 and 20% of those numbers, yeah.
And what percentage of them have less than 30 hours a week?
Without looking at the payroll records, I don't know.
Can you give me a ballpark? I mean...
Usually, the part-time workers are servers, and they compose probably 25% of our staff.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hooker. Now we'll hear from Adam Fitzpatrick.
Good evening, council. My name is Adam Fitzpatrick, and I'm a Westside resident, and I've worked in the food and service industry for the last seven years. Fortunately for myself, those past seven years have all been here in Santa Monica, and I've thoroughly enjoyed my time out here. As a college student, I worked at a local coffee shop up on Wiltshire, and for the past two years, I've served as a supervisor at Milo and Olive, which is a locally-owned restaurant, part of a family group of restaurants that operate here in Santa Monica. My experience here in the local independent restaurant scene has been amazing. I can say that I've really enjoyed it, and it's been neat to see how the community has really invested and dedicated a lot of their time and resources to see local business grow. As an employee, I've just really had an opportunity to be a part of what's going on in the community. I'm not a Santa Monica native, but I've been here long enough, and I've grown to love it and to see how the success has gone. But I'm basically here to stand as an employee from my perspective. The labor peace agreements, I'll just echo, you know, are, seem to me like they're putting into place to try to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. At my own restaurant, at Milo and Olive, I've enjoyed a really close relationship, not only just with my colleagues, but also our managers and our owners. I feel like as an employee, I find them to be very accessible and approachable, and to me, that says a lot. It means a lot to me to have that open relationship, because if you are familiar, the restaurant business can be very demanding, and I don't want to lose that relationship that I have with my ownership.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzpatrick. Councilmember Himmler has a question for you.
Don't go away. Come back.
Come back, come back.
So how many employees are there approximately at Milo and Olive?
Milo and Olive, I'd say there's about 80, 80 to 100.
And how many are full-time?
Technically, full-time, I'd say maybe about 30 of us.
And do you have a sense of the workers, not the managers?
Correct.
But what the wage range is? I mean, bottom, just a range?
For most of us, we work at minimum wage, but thanks to the minimum wage ordinance that you guys enacted recently, it's definitely helped us out, and we've been very happy about that change being positive for us.
So where are you now at about, are you at $13? Is that where you are?
12, 1250.
Yeah, no benefits, though?
No, we do have benefits, actually.
With benefits, it's less.
Oh.
Yeah, so our restaurant group actually charges, is surcharge, it's voluntary on customer checks that goes to support our healthcare.
So do you have to contribute to that healthcare? Is it provided by the restaurant?
It's provided by the restaurant.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, though. Milo and Olive is not on city-owned property, is it?
To my knowledge, it is not.
So the really only issue here, you have sidewalk dining, correct?
We do not.
No? So, okay, all right. Thank you. All right, Mr. Clarizio, before you come up, let's call a few more names. Nicole Olson, Carl Hansen, Jerry Rubin, and Natalia Zurnisgaya. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, mayor and city council. John Clarizio, Spitfire Grill. As I was sitting here at the beginning and listening to presentations from Mr. Lawrence, it struck me that I, too, started in 1986 with my Santa Monica business career, and had done restaurants and staff, as well as many of the restaurants that are here even longer than me. And it struck me a couple ways. One, we've been building the same teamwork that everyone was commending Mr. Lawrence on, and we, as restaurants, I guess, want the kind of, the council to acknowledge that, yes, we do do that on our own. We don't need another ordinance on top of us to make us do it. That's how we do it. That's how we do our business. As you all know, I've been the target of the unions. Why me? I'm not sure, other than I'm under a lease negotiation, so I guess I fit the profile of somebody to hit up. But it strikes us that, put on words, that they're hitting us before we've even gone to negotiate anything. And they've come out and preemptively did a strike, which is exactly what you say in our leases, you're trying to prevent, and that's what happens. It's a little disingenuous on their part, I believe, and it kind of gives us an opening to what possibly we're going to see if this goes forward. I am, as you know, against this LPA to begin with, and I think you should reject it as another ordinance that overcomplicates our business lives and our ability to work with our employees. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Clarizio. We have some questions from the council, starting with Councilmember McQuaid.
Okay. Well, thank you for coming here tonight and bringing your story, and it's important, I think, that we understand what each other are saying. You said that the union implemented a strike, but from my experience, a union can only strike if a place is unionized. So I think what you meant was they did an informational picket at your place of business. That's not a strike. Is that what you meant? Or did you mean literally a strike?
Okay. I guess terminology-wise, they were picketing.
Okay. But your waiters did not go on strike?
No, none of my employees are on strike.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Vazquez.
And I know when I went to visit your place, you mentioned that, what's the total employees you have?
We're at now 37.
And you said, how many of them were full-time, though?
Six to seven are full-time equivalent, where they have full 35-plus hours per week.
And I know when I asked you that, you said, "That's by choice," right?
Correct. Most in this industry have other things in their lives going on, either a second job, school, careers, acting, et cetera, et cetera. So they choose to do that kind of scheduling with us, and we try to help them and create schedules that fit their lives, and it's worked out.
But I notice when I've gone there on several occasions, when I've talked to the employees, especially the ones in Spanish, they told me they would love to work full-time, and it's not by choice.
Well, okay, so...
When you told me it was by choice.
Well, it is, the industry is by choice that they are doing part-time.
I'm asking you and your business, though, not the industry.
Well, I'll elaborate, and I'll let you, what I'm going to say is that in order to fulfill that need of all these schedules combining, it's not always possible to just give one person unlimited hours that they may want, because what ends up happening is, and as people have already talked about, you get very busy at certain points of the day, and on weekends, in our case, or other days, and in order to fill that, you need to have your 37 employees. But on a given day, you've got like 10 or 12 people working. So you spread that out over a schedule to make it function. And so are there a couple people that sure would want more hours? I think everybody would want more hours if they could have their druthers, but if we're not busy enough, if there isn't enough sales, if the heat like it went to 100 degrees, our business got cut in half. I mean, what do we do? I mean, so that person that wanted full-time now just became part-time. And it's not vindictive, it's just we're filling, keeping the business alive, keeping the service as best we can, and adapting to ever-changing conditions in our businesses. But did that not answer?
No, I think, you painted a picture to me that, you know, 37 of them, and you said only six are full-time. I can't imagine that you can't accommodate more than half of them that want to work full-time.
Okay. The schedules don't work that way in the business when you have two-hour windows that are busy.
That's fine, thanks.
Mr. Clarizio, we now have a question from Councilmember O'Dea.
Sorry, thanks for staying. I'm interested to know what the impact on the business was when you had the pickets there.
Well, the first thing that the impact was that the customer base got very upset and started calling the police, which led to three squad cars and three airport security coming out. They started filing complaints, and then within 20 minutes to a half hour, the patio... patio completely emptied out, which was at twelve o'clock on a Saturday. The volume on the megaphone was such that it may have kept to standards of the city laws, but it was, it hurt your ears. So, it cleared out the business. People driving by just kept going. I heard some calls from people saying they just saw what was going on, they didn't want to deal with it. So, they just, they just moved on.
So, it was a significant revenue impact?
Uh, yeah, because it was peak, so we probably lost a good thousand dollars just in that little window of an hour and a half on a Saturday, and it happened four times, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarizio. And now Nicole Olson, who's having time donated by Sean Gainer. Is Nicole here? Is Sean Gainer here? All right, so welcome, Ms. Gainer. You have four minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nicole Olson, and I'm a server at Spitfire Grill on Airport Avenue. I work five to six days a week. I moved to Southern California four and a half years ago to take advantage of the employment opportunities available here. I feel fortunate that I found employment at Spitfire. It's a great working environment, the customers are wonderful, and the historic atmosphere of the airport makes it special, it makes it a special place to work. My employer is a straight-up guy who follows the rules. The kitchen staff, the bussers, the servers, and the management work together. We're a diverse and tight-knit team. That's why we were surprised when demonstrators from Unite Here arrived at the airport sidewalk and began to picket in front of the restaurant. I didn't know these people, nobody knew them, and they were chanting "No justice, no peace." That's a call to action that we Americans hear a lot these days in response to real tragedies, like unwarranted shootings or major disasters, or when the powerful of this nation harass the powerless. My coworkers and I were simply preparing and serving lunch, setting tables, and topping up coffee cups like we always do. Where's the injustice? The picketers used a bullhorn, which forced our patio customers to go indoors. Some patrons were uncomfortable, gave up, and left. Other customers turned around and went to other restaurants once they caught sight of the picket and heard the chanting. The union visited Spitfire three times that week at peak lunch hours. When it was all over, we were, of course, paid time for the dead time, and we lost hundreds in tips. That's money we set aside for the future and money we pay taxes on, too. No justice, for sure. Then the "no peace" part happened. On October tenth, two people from Unite Here arrived at my doorstep. They asked my husband if I was home. Again, I didn't know these people, so it was pretty disconcerting that they asked for me by name. My husband replied that we were in interest, interested, and they pressed on. They told them it concerned my job at Spitfire Grill. They claimed it was about my union. He knows I don't belong to a union. My husband remained calm and polite and persuaded them to leave. After a while, they did, but we weren't camp, happy campers. It was our wedding anniversary, so our dinner conversation just drifted back and back to the unwelcome visit. My coworkers and I want to ask Unite Here why this is okay. We want to understand when the solidarity among workers kicks in, when we sign cards, when we pay union dues and fines, when we are told to mistrust our employer. So-called labor peace won't do a thing except to get in the way of small restaurants who form the heart of this community are able to do business in peace. Please reject this misguided proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Olson. Mr. Hansen? No, please hold your applause. We have to have an unbiased hearing where everybody feels free to express their opinions.
Good evening, councilmembers. Carl Hansen, Director of Government Affairs for the Santa Monica Chamber of Commerce. We submitted our letter to you largely reflecting a lot of the points that were expressed tonight. We do thank you for taking the time to look into this in depth and giving staff the direction to bring back the report that they brought before you, and I think they've done a good job, but I think the underlying problem is not something that they can address, is that there is so much uncertainty, and we are left with so many questions. First, is why do we even need this labor peace agreement? As the staff report says, there's no history of labor dispute upsetting workflow or leading to the loss of city revenue at these sites. And if there is no history of a problem, I hope tonight you will discuss, you know, what exactly is missing from the existing protections in the National Labor Relations Act or the city's current leasing guidelines that seem to have done a very good job and are very strong in protecting our local workers? Finally, you know, is it fair for an employer, you know, to agree to waive the rights that workers have to a secret ballot, which is what a card check is? Is that something we want? Is that something that will meet the needs that you have in bringing this requirement forward? You know, further, is it fair for, or even legal for, an employer to be making agreements with a union that does not represent its employees? I mean, unionization is about the representation of workers, and if this is an outside entity that's trying to pressure its way in, is that a good thing? And it doesn't matter what the size of the employer is, if it's small or large, that's not the right way to protect workers. And last, I just wanted to say, what feels so strange to me about this particular ordinance is it's essentially like Mad Libs policy. We don't know what goes into a labor peace agreement, and you're essentially making requirements without specifying what they are, and that's unfair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hansen. Mr. Rubin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Winter, City Councilmembers Jerry Rubin, Santa Monica. Well, as I've spoken over the years to the council, I'm a pretty big union supporter. I think most everyone I know seems that we're on the right track with the living wage ordinance. See how it works out, but it's something we debated for a long, long, long time, and I don't remember too many of the groups really opposing it in the end when it all worked out. I think most people I talk to, even in the business community, are really happy we have a lot of union hotels. The Miramar, a lot of the proposed new ones that are going to benefit our city. I was surprised to hear about this myself. I mean, I've been at demonstrations against Donald Trump screaming "No justice, no peace", but, my goodness. Isn't this something that you want to work out more and take a lot more time to work out, if it's going to work out at all? I just don't think that tonight is the time to pass something, and it needs a lot more study. But I do want to say I hope that we continue on the track to understand how important the labor movement is and how important unions have been over the years. And there's always fears, and there's always a lot of questions about that, but people deserve a living wage, people deserve a lot. I've seen a documentary about something that showed how horrible it can be if you don't have these protections. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, and Ms. Zernitskaya.
You said my name right. Thank you.
Sure.
Good evening. I'm Natalia Zernitskaya. I live in the Pico neighborhood, and I'm involved in many civic issues and organizations, but tonight I'm speaking as a resident. I ask you to reject the proposed labor peace agreement requirement for two reasons. One, it's fundamentally inequitable. The proposed LPA requirement would target a small number of local restaurants, roughly forty or so of them, which lease city property for outdoor dining. It will also capture those go-to restaurants that are located in the middle of city property, and I don't need to name them because we all eat there. Two, it's based on an erroneous assumption. Expecting the worst from restaurant owners in our tight-knit community is a wrong-headed way of making policy. The fact is that the relationships between local restaurant staffers and owners is unusually and historically harmonious. Those relationships are long-lasting, familial, and meaningful because our community ethos is powerful. Are we surprised when we see longtime servers, bussers, and kitchen staff at our favorite eateries? Never, because that's us. That's how we roll. Pardon the colloquialism. Before my current job in the financial sector, I worked at two establishments with sidewalk dining, one in downtown Santa Monica and one at Twenty-Sixth and Wilshire. And listen, our streetscape got its mojo back when chairs and tables started popping up on our sidewalks. So much more pleasant. And the same thing happened with the old Beach Club property. It crackled back to life when Fred Denny set up shop and shooed away a decade of political rancor and bad vibes on that contested piece of beach. Food heals, and I'm not just saying that because I was hungry when I wrote this. I'm not here to slam Unite Here. The protections that they afford hotel workers and the guidance they give to hotel ownership are priceless, but hotels are large institutions. Owners and employees alike are subject to economic forces that small restaurants will never experience. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to call some of the names I called before when no one showed up, just to give everybody a second chance. That would be Liz Rubin, Amira McCullough, Laura Houston, Daniel Polk, Philip Cummins, Eddie Sevilla, and John Grodar. Any of those individuals are here, this is your last chance to speak. If not, we'll close the public hearing and move on to council questions, discussions, and deliberations. Councilmember McEwen, do you have a question of staff?
Well, I wanted first to acknowledge the public testimony and maybe just clear the air on a couple of things, because I think I can share some very good news. First of all, forced unionization is not on the agenda tonight. That's not what this is. There was a lot of talk about the relationship between employers and employees, and labor peace is not about that, and the role that we're playing tonight is not about that. And there were quite a few comments about sidewalk dining, which I and this council, as shown by policy decisions we've made before, dearly love, and I'm very pleased to let you know that sidewalk dining has nothing to do with this labor peace. That has been stated in the staff presentation. And frankly, sidewalk dining, the circumstances of sidewalk dining wouldn't justify labor peace. So, I think we need to talk about what labor peace is as opposed to what it is not. A lot of what we heard was what labor peace, frankly, is not. We've had labor peace in Santa Monica since at least 2000. I think that's in the staff report, and that was the Viceroy Hotel. We have been moving toward labor peace in different parts of the city since then, and in fact, this study session tonight, and some people said, "Oh, please don't pass the law tonight." Well, more good news, we're not going to. This is a study session, and the study session came out of a council direction that was given by the mayor and one of our colleagues back in March. So, you know, this is not like all of a sudden this dropped out of the sky. This city has been thinking about labor peace for a long time. So, why? We are blessed as a community to own certain pieces of land within our city, and some of those pieces of land, I'm not talking about sidewalks for sidewalk dining, I'm talking about actual buildings for the most part, that are on city land are leased to businesses that are in the restaurant business. The revenue that we get from those leases generally includes a rent and a percentage of what the restaurant makes, and so that revenue belongs to our residents. That's what pays for resident services, or one of the things that pays for resident services. So, as far as I'm concerned tonight, the reason why I'm here and want to talk about this issue is I want to protect that revenue stream. I want to make sure that we don't have labor disruptions that interfere with that labor, with that revenue stream and mean that the money that we depend on for the budget, which we'll talk about later tonight, isn't dependably there. I think there are a lot of ways that we can mitigate this to address the concerns we've heard, but I just want to start out by saying that this is not about forcing workers to become union workers. This is not about ending sidewalk dining, and it's not about not appreciating our small businesses either. It's about protecting our community from revenue disruption, and I hope that that's what we will move toward tonight as a council.
So, there's no question of staff in any of that? Okay, Councilmember McEwen, you had a question of staff?
Yeah, I do have a question. And actually, so we did hear, obviously, Councilmember McEwen in a statement pointed out that what we're discussing tonight is not sidewalk dining. Is it also true that what we're not discussing are, for example, the carts on the promenade, those what I'll call almost micro-businesses? Okay, so, so we're not talking about sidewalk dining, we're not talking about the carts on the promenade. So, some of the businesses that are listed in the list of businesses on, in the staff report, wouldn't even be affected by what we're discussing tonight. Is that correct?
Correct. The, in the staff report, staff is recommending that outdoor dining be exempt from the policy discussions and that food service carts on the pier similarly be exempted from the policy discussion, recognizing kind of the micro-business enterprise that the carts represent. And on the promenade, we have no food service carts, but in concept, if you adopted the same concept of principle, it would be applied if there ever was.
And then one more question. With regard to the living wage statute, we have an exemption for small business. How do we define that? I believe it's by employees. Is that correct? Number of full-time employees?
Yes, and to clarify, because I think there was an interchange of nomenclature, so this, the minimum wage is what council adopted just recently, a few years ago, versus the living wage. Living wage is applied to city contractors. So, in the context of minimum wage, the definition of a small business is twenty-five or fewer employers and employees, irregardless if they're full-time or part-time. So, twenty-five employees, and that's calculated on an average throughout the year.
And to your knowledge, have we seen any effect on hiring with that? For example, and I don't know if we would even know the statistic or not, but that there are no businesses with employees between, say, twenty-five and thirty-five? In other words, that people are forcing themselves to stay under the twenty-five, to exempt themselves from the requirements, and really, until they get big enough where they just can't function with less than twenty-five, they go up?
So, you know, that's a, so to answer your question, recognizing the minimum wage, and I think you heard some testimony from some of the business, business individuals, they're clearly not making that decision to try to stay under the employee count of twenty-five and fewer, and as such, you would have actually businesses saying, "I want as many of my employees to be full-time as possible to reduce the total number so they would not be required to pay the higher minimum wage rate," because the differential is if you're at twenty-six or greater employees, that's the higher minimum wage rate. As you recall, there was a two-tier system of minimum wage rate. And so, you know, I think just from anecdotal description, they're really trying to meet the needs of both their operations as well as kind of the employees', you know, just, you know, personal needs.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Dea?
I just wanted to ask our staff, when, you know, I want to understand that these LPA is a little bit better, and I have had a hard time understanding just sort of what is the difference between a labor agreement on a site and an LPA? Why is an LPA the lighter version? I understand that it's not represented workers that you're signing an LPA with. Who are you signing it with? Who's the counterparty?
So, to clarify, so there is labor peace, and labor peace is just recognizing the relationship between employer and employee, and that's ultimately defined in the National Labor Relations Act, which actually is labor law throughout the country. In our existing leasing guidelines for the pier in downtown, we have a labor peace provision, and it explicitly prohibits employers from prohibiting employees' ability to organize. The difference thereof, which is really the conversation at hand, is a requirement that we would require food service operators to enter into a labor peace agreement, and that's an actual form of contract between a union organization and a business. And that would be a condition, as conceptualized through the LAX labor peace agreement provision, to be applied conceptually to Santa Monica businesses, separate from other forms of labor peace, be it labor peace project agreements where you have large construction projects. This is more so in the operational realm.
And so, I mean, what I was reading, as I understood some of these terms, it's any labor organization that requests a labor peace agreement would have, the lessee, our lessee, would then have to enter into a labor peace agreement with that organization.
That is correct.
Could that mean multiple entities? So, you could have multiple employee unions asking, and then anytime that any union asks, you would have to en- you would have to enter into one of those agreements? Or otherwise be in default of your lease?
That, to answer the question, that it is possible that there could be multiple labor organizations that would come forward and seek efforts to represent workers. I think in the context of the West Side of Los Angeles and within this industry of hospitality workers, as our understanding is, Unite Here Local 11 is the only hospitality-based union operation. That my understanding, the one distinction is valet operations are represented by the Teamsters. So depending on how that employer relationship exists, and my general understanding is most valet operations are third-party contracted operations.
Excuse me. Councilmember, my understanding is that the, and I will stand corrected if my understanding is incorrect, that the language used by LAX means that if you have a labor peace agreement, you are in compliance with your lease obligations. That does not mean that you could have more than one seeking to do that. But that's, I think, the obligation imposed by the LAX language, which is one of the options before you tonight, would be satisfied by a single labor peace agreement with a legitimate union.
Okay.
Is that correct? Okay, yes.
Well, then, that's an important topic. I mean, whether it's any or a. And it's also, and how do you, how do we validate whether it's a legitimate union?
Fair question. And in tonight's discussion, since we're not recommending or proposing specific language, we're giving the council a series of alternatives at your request. The exact mechanics of that would be things that we would work out based upon your instructions. If you said, you know, here's some things to take into account to make sure that we were dealing with legitimate.
That's what I raised the question.
We'd have to work that out. Again, we probably would look to other practices, as you know. In a narrower framework, the LAX language was upheld by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals that they're not us and we're not them. But we certainly would take a look at what they have utilized, since they have experience and as of now, we don't. But that's a hypothetical down the road in that you haven't sent us down that road. And if you do, we'll do our best to bring back what would be required. And then, of course, you could modify your recommendation. You could say, well, that's not exactly satisfactory. But at the present, there's probably a way to set up guidelines that would distinguish legitimate from less legitimate. But it's not without its challenges, as I think people who understand labor history know. Labor unions don't always see eye to eye. Famously, when growers made a pact with the Teamsters in the Central Valley at the expense of striking UFW workers, that dispute led to state violence against the striking workers. So it's a complicated arena to enter into. But as Mr. Harris said, that probably isn't the case here in that there does not, at the present time, seem to be many unions operating in this space.
Okay.
Or many besides one, actually, to be fair.
It's these kind of operational considerations I'm trying to understand more deeply. And so similarly, there is a question as to whether we would define what would be valid in a labor peace agreement, right? Because that's certainly still open to some interpretation. Is there, are there other standards in place where we require of lessee, or I don't know, a regulated party in the city, that we would ask for a third party, that we would ask to reach an agreement with a third party? Where that third party is not, say, a government agency or certification or something like that?
Councilmember, I'm not aware of any other third-party contractual conditions we've required any of our lessees. They're typically more operational conditions.
Like you have to get a county health permit, for example, right?
Correct. But just general assumptions that they'd be having the business operational requirements of all permits and meeting all rules and laws.
But a negotiated agreement with the third party doesn't, is not something we've done.
That's beyond the traditional laws and regulations.
Certainly not anywhere in our other, not anywhere else in the leases.
Correct.
Okay. That's my question. Thank you.
Any more questions of staff? If not, councilmembers, the matter as before is for discussion and hopefully some form of direction to staff. There's seven of us. Surely somebody has something to say on the matter. Councilmember McEwen?
Well, I've looked at the different options, and I am very wary of any option that puts us in the position of deciding what a labor peace agreement will be other than that it protects our revenue. I think we have to be very careful about the fact that it is the National Labor Relations Act that controls any negotiated agreement between workers and an employer or a union. That is not our area to get into. Our interest here has to be figuring out how to guarantee continued revenue from these leaseholds where we own the property as stewards for the residents of the city. And looking at the various options given to us, the one that seemed the closest to what I think we meant back in March when we asked to have this looked at is what our own local school district did, actually. What they said was that you have to have an agreement that there'll be no strike. And they didn't set what the parameters of that were. It's up to the employer and a union, or any union, in this case, a union, to make a handshake agreement, or perhaps signed, that, you know, we will negotiate in ways that don't impede the ability of this property to generate ongoing revenue, and that means we won't have any strikes. So actually, the union is giving up one of its biggest tools in that process because striking is obviously, or picketing is something, disrupting revenue is something that a union will use to get an employer's attention. So as I understand what labor peace would mean, for instance, what has happened out at the Spitfire could not happen under a labor peace agreement. Because that, we heard from the testimony, that that affected the revenue of that restaurant for that time. So that would violate labor peace where there are labor peace agreement. Now, what I thought was really interesting about what the school district did was they built in, without defining what a labor peace agreement should be, a safety valve that can give the employer some sense that, well, I'm not being thrown down a rabbit hole with somebody who has the power to twist my arm behind my back unreasonably. The school district said that if either party feels that the discussion has been capricious, unreasonable, that it can then be appealed. In the school district's case, they said to the school board, I don't know that we as a city council want to be taking that on. It might be a third party. We can let that be decided by staff if we don't, if we do go down this particular path. But I would suggest, I don't know if we need a motion in a study session, but I would suggest that we explore option four that was presented to us in the staff report.
Mayor Mayfair Tim Davis?
Well, I'm certainly interested to hear what others of my colleagues say. I do have a couple of issues that I think, well, I think option four is certainly interesting. I would want to do something different than what the school district did, which is, I think one of the things we need to do is perhaps make the reviewing party, the party that would determine whether or not either of the parties had acted in a bad faith or arbitrary and capricious manner, not be a political body. And that we determine whether or not it's legal for us to either hire someone to be a reviewing officer or some sort of function in that job, or whether we designate one of the many agencies that exist that have mediators working for them, like Judicial Arbitration and Mediation Services, affectionately known as JAMS, that sort of thing. I think that it's important that if we are going to provide a relief valve, that everyone involved believe that the relief valve be an impartial decider and not a political body. So that would be the one comment I would have about option four. I think the other thing is, we do have, as Mr. Harris pointed out, with regards to our minimum wage statute and an exemption for smaller businesses, and I think that's something we probably ought to consider in terms of putting these sorts of requirements on businesses. I think we did that with the two-tier system in the minimum wage statute because we recognize that smaller businesses were less able to absorb these kinds of burdens. And so I think we need to think about that again. And then I suspect the only other comment I would have is that we, this again, and I'm a big fan of this, is, you know, we perhaps in a year, 18 months down the line, get an informational item if we do something like, once we make a decision, and I know we're not making a decision tonight, but that we monitor this and see what effect it's having. And if, in fact, as many of the people said tonight, that businesses are shutting down, I think we need to know that. If businesses are finding that it's more difficult, they're curtailing hours or cutting back on the number of employees, we would like to know that as well. You know, I think there was a lot of discussion about unintended consequences, and I don't think that's talk that we should take lightly. And so I think one of the things we'll need to do as we move forward with any sort of plan is monitor it and see what effect it's having on our local economy and on our local businesses. Because as the staff report acknowledges, this council repeatedly has stated its desire to nurture and promote independently locally-owned businesses. And so we don't want to get in a position where we put requirements on that end up losing those businesses, which are, they hire local, the money gets churned back into our local economy at a much higher rate than when we have chains, for example. And frankly, they just contribute much more to the environment in our city. So if we are thinking about doing something, I think those are considerations I'd like to put on the table.
Councilmember McEwen?
Well, I'd like to convert my initial thought into a motion, given that I've now heard there's likely to be a second on option four. Incorporating into that is friendly amendments that the decision of arbitrary and capricious be made by some non-political reviewing body, and that, yes, we have a monitoring process afterwards so that we're sure that we're not having the unintended consequences that we've been warned about. So I'll make that as a motion, hoping that the secondary has already spoken.
I mean, I'll second that, but I'd like to hear from our colleagues and see what they feel about it. So I'm not necessarily committing to voting for it, but I'd like to hear what other people say.
Absolutely. But it often helps us to focus our discussion to have an actual motion.
That's fine.
Councilmember Vasquez?
I agree. I think it's good to, at least the direction we're heading here, to explore this, especially this option about having a non-political body or individual that would review this. Because I know in my conversations with several of the folks, especially the mom-and-pop restaurants that are operating in the city, that I think are doing right by the workers, at least the ones, the majority of them, I should say, that I've spoken to when I talked to the workers, some of them are happy. And I think they would be just as happy without a union than with a union. And I think we need to make sure we protect those folks that are in those positions, especially for the employers that are comfortable in that position or in that role and are doing right by them now. And I think maybe this independent body could play that role. Because I know in talking to one specific operator that was, I guess, at LAX at one point, went through this and found himself, at the beginning, feeling comfortable with it. But then after three or four years, when they were renegotiating, found themselves in a position that was uncomfortable for him. And then he felt that he was kind of being forced to do something that he didn't think was in the best interest of his workers. And I think we need to figure that piece out at the same time. So we strike that balance. So I feel comfortable with the direction of this motion at this point.
Councilmember Himmelrich?
So I do agree about the direction of the motion. I do think that it is the correct direction. The one thing I want to be sure of is that we not prejudge who the deciding body should be, that we be given some alternatives as to that. And I also think we may need, after hearing the testimony tonight, some more education as to what this really means, who it will affect, and not only the scope of it, but what are the rights and responsibilities on each side? And I think that that's a little unclear right now, and we need to do more outreach on that.
Councilmember O'Dea?
Well, I think it's really important that we have very clear standards for what we're asking of a lessee here, and what, and also that the, as Councilmember Himmelrich points out, that it's well-understood by everyone what those standards are and how to achieve them in order to do business with the city. It's important in my mind to have low cost or no-cost administration associated with this work, both for the city itself, that we're not adding additional costs because this is about protecting income to the city, but also to those businesses because that's all the same pool of revenue. Let's, you know, be clear. And a cost imposed on a lessee is ultimately taken out of the lease revenue that we earn from that lessee in one way or another. And so I think that we need to be careful not to wade into something that leads to significant amount of additional cost and uncertainty in the relationship that we establish with our lessees. And when I look at these options, the only one that achieves that in my mind is option five, which is to leave the guidelines as-is. Those guidelines that we have now have clear standards for behavior, for what lessee could not engage in, in impeding workers from organizing. Even when we're looking at option four, which is the current motion plus this independent arbiter, I guess, who would be a non-political body if I'm summarizing accurately. In that case, you know, I certainly would welcome to hear staff's opinions as to who might serve as an independent non-political body. But that process itself is still not defined. I don't, how we define that, I think, you know, in my mind, I don't see a way to give that clear standards until it has operated for many years and incurred a lot of cost and uncertainty and imposed some meaningful risks on our lessees. So, you know, those requirements don't meet the standards that I'd be looking for, to have clear standards and low or no-cost administration to all parties. And in the, you know, just kind of moving up the list to the first few of the options in the staff report, they kind of become even more fraught with establishing guidelines. As Councilmember McEwen, it's definitely not the kind of thing that we want to get into in the dictating just what those LPAs ought to include. All of these things begin to get into much more fraught categories and away from what I think we ought to be doing, which is establishing clear standards for behavior for the businesses that we do business with.
Councilmember O'Connor?
Does the motion include the staff recommendation that food service carts and outdoor dining licenses be exempted?
Yes.
Thanks for the clarification. I tend to lean towards item five, option five. I think Councilmember O'Dea really expressed some of my concerns there, and let's continue with option five. I am concerned... I am concerned about the problems that may come up, and unintended consequences of moving along with option four, with its, even with its neutral arbitration.
The mayor pro tem has kindly allowed me to jump in ahead of her, so I'm going to share my thoughts. I share the concerns we've heard from the small independent businesses, that we still haven't defined what would be the terms of a labor peace agreement. And even the school district language, while it says it must have a no-strike pledge, it's silent on what everything else in a labor peace agreement contains. And I actually prefer pursuing the option where we actually develop a template, and we have some clarity for people on both sides about exactly what a labor peace agreement should contain. So I can't support the motion. It's currently moved, because I just think it opens up this gigantic black hole of uncertainty, where you go into your lessee and go into negotiations at a labor peace agreement, you don't really know what to anticipate, and it makes it very hard for small businesses, as we heard, to plan ahead about what sort of increased regulatory or financial burdens they might be placing upon themselves by entering into this labor peace agreement. I just think that the lack of specificity is a real problem in the direction we're headed. I'm all for making sure that we have labor peace, and we have continued revenue streams from our businesses we lease to on our public lands, but I just think that there's serious challenges in the direction we're headed, that even with the outlet of, you know, the safety valve of an appeal, if you're, if I'm the appellant body, whoever I am, a hearing officer, you know, an arbitrator, et cetera, how can I tell whether or not the two sides are negotiating good faith, when there's not any terms about what ought to be the basis for the negotiation in good faith? So I would much prefer to go, I think, with option two or three. I don't have them up there on the screen anymore, but the one where we provide at least some sort of template for what an LPA would look like.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Well, I think that's an interesting concept. I wanted to start out and buzzed back in, because I'm sympathetic to what council members O'Connor and O'Day said. My concern is that, under the current labor peace agreement, we have exactly what we didn't want to have have, which is the picketing at the Spitfire Grill. And we heard from the owner and people who work there that it had a negative impact on business. And my concern is that if we just stick with the current system, that doesn't make some sort of exaction from the union, or the representative body, whomever that might be, that has to engage in the labor peace agreement, we could see more of that. And ultimately, it would have a negative impact on the revenues that we'd begin to realize from operations on city land. And so I think that while it may be that up till this point, option five has been working okay, it's quite possible that it's not going to work okay in the future, and that's the eventuality that I think we need to address. I also very much agree with the mayor that it's the uncertainty, I think, that scares everybody. Nobody likes uncertainty, and certainly when it's your livelihood at stake, it becomes quite serious. I don't know, and maybe this is something with the guidance we can give staff, is do we have to come up with a template, or when staff brings this back, can there be some very broad guidelines about what might be in a labor peace agreement, so people understand what might be there, but without the city dictating the terms? I think that's the sort of no-man's land that we get into, because what might work at one establishment doesn't work at another, and I'm not sure it's the city's purview, even though we have a strong interest in protecting our revenues, to really set forth what each individual business should or should not do. So I think, I don't know if there's a hybrid in there, or whatever, but it seems to me that maybe that's something we can give direction. Obviously, Councilmember McKeon made the motion, and I seconded it, but I think within that motion, there might be room to have staff, when it returns with this item, set forth some of the things that might be included in a labor peace agreement, so that people get some idea about specifically what we're talking about, without making it a requirement, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
Councilmember McKeon.
Well, I'm going to ask a couple of questions of staff right now, tonight, in a good-faith effort to navigate us between Silla and Carybdis here, and I'll start with Silla, which is the template. My worry there is, the moment we start to define what labor peace ought to be, we are treading on the toes of the National Labor Relations Act. So let me ask of legal staff, suppose we set this up with a non-political body that was looking at whether the discussions had been arbitrary or capricious, the demands were unreasonable, would they not be able to look at federal labor law to decide whether things were arbitrary or capricious? Do we locally have to try to reinvent a body of law that has been written at the federal level?
I don't believe we would. We certainly could look at all options if we were looking at that model, if that's the direction you wanted to go.
So avoiding trying to define it locally, I think, would steer us away from Silla, which is the danger of trying to write a template that conflicts with federal law. And then Carybdis, the concerns that Councilmember O'Day had about the cost of this, can staff suggest any ways that we could craft option four in a way that kept the cost down, that kept it as simple as possible?
I suppose that we could put a time limit. We could set, not a template for the content of the labor peace agreement, which you've raised concerns about, but we could set a template for how the negotiations might proceed. You know, you must meet three times, and you must, you know, there certainly are precedents in labor law. I don't know them, but I'm sure our city attorney's office has access to them, about what constitutes fair bargaining, whether they exist in federal law, which is what you're seeking to be in accordance with. Again, I would defer to the city attorney's office. But I don't know that beyond that, we could address the issue of the uncertainty, which is what also has a dollar cost, which is you have to then get either very sophisticated negotiators or very skilled labor lawyers to navigate between the two extremes you've posed.
We could, then, it sounds like, set rules for the process and the timeline, where we wouldn't be interfering with federal labor law. We wouldn't be saying what the agreement had to say. We'd just be saying, get to it, folks, you know, this is a limited-time process, there are certain things you're obligated to do. That would move some of the uncertainty. Now people are going into this, not even knowing, well, how do we meet? Who do we meet with? What do we do? We could build a structure within which the negotiation for the terms of the labor peace agreement would be out of our hands, but we would determine a process. I hope we would be able to do that. The reason why I characterize option five as Carybdis is because, frankly, that won't stop the problem we have, is the disruption of revenue. The rules we have now don't address that. They had their purpose, but the guarantee of ongoing revenue wasn't one of them, and I think the reason we're meeting here tonight is to figure out how to protect city revenue.
Mr. Cole, you're in the queue.
I am. Well, I guess it was to answer.
All right. Councilmember O'Connor. Councilmember McKeon's question.
So maybe we should just get out of such agreements. You know, there's a fine line between protesting for justice and when it starts to approach bullying, and with the purpose of possibly driving small independent businesses out of business. And if, the problem with number five is that it's going to say to whoever the organized labor entity is, that if you are loud enough, if you are out there trying to drive someone out of business, you're going to be rewarded. So I'm actually now leaning towards saying, questioning whether we should even have a labor peace provision in any lease.
Councilmember Hemmerich.
So maybe I'm a little confused. This is a study session, so what we're doing is, we're giving staff our thoughts about what direction it ought to take, and then they're going to come back to us after looking at the issue in more depth, including all of the legal ramifications, the practical ramifications, and what it means going forward, and give us options. So, you know, we're now acting as if we're making a final decision, where I think that despite the motion, what we're really trying to do is give staff a sense of what direction we want to move, and there may be different ways of threading the needle. Am I right?
I think a motion just makes it easier for staff to count opinions, to be more clear on what the consensus is.
The motion is a specific direction and what to come back with.
But it sounds like it's slipping, and that's why I'm asking this.
Oh, I don't think directions slip. They sometimes expand, and that may be.
Well, okay, so I think that, when I talked about outreach and setting the parameters of what we were expecting of people, and now we're talking about having a rulebook for that, I would be more inclined to say, let's set parameters, and less inclined to set rules, which seems to me to be more intrusive on the whole process.
If I can clarify, mayor, I certainly never said that there should be rules. I talked about having an established process. I think our hands should be completely off what is negotiated between the negotiated parties.
Oh, so you said mayor? I thought you were talking to Ted.
No, I asked for mayor's permission to speak, because I'm not in the queue. But I wanted to respond to your apparent question, which is whether my motion had now included the idea of setting rules for what the parameters of an agreement should be. Absolutely not. I just want to set a process for how the agreement might be moved forward in a reasonable timeframe.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Day.
Yeah, I guess my difficulty with this concept is to establishing a template for the negotiation or for the process itself, for the negotiated agreement or for the negotiation process itself, is that it doesn't feel like it has an end, to me, ever. I mean, even with the suggestion that Mr. Cole made related to, well, you have to meet three times, for example, or the standard that you might have to be negotiating in good faith, or this capricious or arbitrary concept, they all require some determination in the end, and in the end, a sort of, you know, having been around this long enough and hearing the, you know, the debates over leases and negotiations, there's always a he and a she, and they always say something different. And so we, no matter how much we try to define this, there will be an uncertainty to the process that leads ultimately to a judgment by some external body as to, you know, who was right and who was wrong. And I find it hard to believe that we could not get into those very specific determinations that Councilmember McKeon, you're saying you want to stay away from. You know, particularly in the given environment, without any standards, we certainly don't have it. And it kind of brings me back to, okay, so, you know, am I willing to go down that path and to try to figure that out, and, you know, even assuming that we could get to some space that had some mitigated degree of exposure on risk and cost for our lease business? Then it brings me back to ask, well, what's wrong with now? Right? Which is what a couple of the council members now have said, that this example of the Spitfire is the, is the what's wrong with now? That the clear standards that an employer could not engage in obstructive behavior against organizing employees doesn't work, has led to, what I heard, was four protests in front of the Spitfire during the lunch hour, that led to about $4,000 disruption of revenue for the Spitfire from us as a lessor. That represents, I don't know what the take is on the revenue for the city on the leases in this example for the Spitfire, but more broadly, maybe on average, it's 10%. So $400 impact for those four protests to the city?
The, to answer the question as to kind of the city's lease revenue as opposed to the business revenue, in this case, Spitfire is one of the tenants that does not have a percentage rent, they just pay a base rent. So there isn't a direct correlation of that loss of business revenue in context to city participation to that lessee.
So it's only if this were to lead to an actual disruption in the business so substantial that the business went under.
Correct.
And thereby defaulted on its lease, and that the city couldn't recover whatever balance due was on that lease for the remaining term.
Correct. That would be the most extreme.
That the city could face any exposure at all in this instance.
Correct.
It brings me back to the, what are we trying to solve here? We've spent more than $400, more than $4,000 tonight already on this work, and so it just doesn't feel, you know, this feels like a very uncertain possibility of resolving this in a way that addresses the need we're after, and we've got a pretty clear standard set already.
Mayor Pro Tem Davis.
Well, I fear maybe we're veering into legislating as opposed to giving direction, because I think we are getting pretty specific about what we may or may not be looking for. I think when this comes back, I'm going to try and take it back to giving direction, because nobody's voting on anything about what we're going to do tonight. We're voting on what we're asking staff to bring back. And again, I'm sympathetic to this, you know, what problem are we solving? And it may not be a problem that has manifested itself to any great degree in the past, but it apparently has the potential to manifest itself to a significant degree in the future. And I think that's, you know, we're trying to be, I think, somewhat forward-looking here. I also think, and, you know, this was said before, but I think it's important to understand that a labor, we can't, as a council, require unionization. So a labor peace agreement would never be, you have to unionize. So, for example, if one of our local businesses, what we heard from some of the employees, and they were truly a family, and had a great relationship with the owner, and they took a vote on unionization, they might actually vote no. And the labor peace agreement would still say there can't be any picketing, but there also wouldn't be a union at the establishment. And so I don't, I just want to make that point clear, that this is about, from my perspective anyway, you know, trying to avoid what happened at the Spitfire happening on a recurring basis, because maybe at the Spitfire, because it's not a percentage lease, it doesn't affect us in the short term, but if it makes it hard for, you know, if we continue having picketing there, or at one of the establishments on the promenade, or on the beach, you know, it does start to have a cumulative impact. So I guess in the idea of direction, what I would like to hear when this comes back, and I know we haven't voted on the quote-unquote "motion" yet, but when this comes back, is if there are, in fact, sort of standards at the NLRB, or maybe it's the Department of Fair Employment and Housing in California, I'm not quite sure who, but that there are some standards that we could look at, that somebody who was looking at this as a third party would say, okay, you know, here's a bridge too far, or here's what's unreasonable, or here's evidence of bad faith, that sort of thing. So I'd like to hear that when that comes back, because.
That's friendly to the maker of the motion.
Yeah, because I just think, like many people in the room, we're sort of fumbling our way through the dark here without knowing that. And then I think it also goes to the issue that Councilmember McKeon raised, about what are our limits, or what would be the advisability of trying to put some process requirements on it, so that it doesn't become horribly expensive to the business. I think the concern some of the businesses have, although it wasn't necessarily expressed out in the open here, but I've heard it behind the scenes, is, well, now I have to go hire a labor lawyer, and they're going to charge me $500 an hour, and they're going to engage in these, you know, while I'm still trying, I don't even have a lease until this gets set. So I think if there are some limitations we can put on it to reduce the cost to all the parties involved, but will still not be illegal, or, you know, or increase our risk too much, I think that's something to look at, so that we can be sensitive to the issue that it's not just the cost to the city, but the cost of the parties involved. But I think that, whether we like it or not, we have to do something. And I know that's unfortunate, and I think a lot of people in this room are going, I'm not sure why. But I think if we were to start to see informational picketing, you know, on the promenade or at the beaches, I said, I think that we'd all realize that perhaps we needed to take action then, and that may well be coming. So having said that, you know, there are some things I want to see when this comes back, before we make a final decision. I just, I don't feel like we're ma, I think it's important for us not to feel like we're making a final decision. making a final decision tonight, because we're not, even though we're talking in fairly concrete terms.
Councilmember Hemrich.
So, I have a question with the city attorney, or maybe Mr. Harris. In our staff report, there was other cities that were cited that actually had included certain specifics in their labor peace agreements, whether there's a requirement for a card-check agreement or something like that. So, what precludes us from creating not rules, but guidelines about what might be in a labor peace agreement, so that at least on both sides of the aisle, there's some clarity? I'm still concerned that, for instance, if we're going for something that's modeled on what the school district did, that was fine, because they were dealing with one large hospitality corporate chain, which had the wherewithal to deal with all of the lawyer requirements, financial requirements, time delays incurred by negotiation. We're talking about, in our city on land, small businesses, which, as we've heard often, both from the public and on the dice, don't have the resources to engage in these, you know, protracted negotiations, and have to make the financial decision before they leap into a new lease whether or not they can incur those additional costs. I just am troubled that we're not providing greater clarity on what is entailed in this. So, given that there are other cities who've done this, and apparently, at least at this point, there's been no legal challenges, why could we not have, not rules, not regulations, but guidelines is what we anticipate?
So, looking at the examples provided from the other cities, I think that some of those are requiring not a no-strike provision like the school district did, but a card-check agreement, for example. And so, in some ways, I think that is a different definition, it's just a different variation of the labor peace agreement. I don't know whether any of these are providing a long set of requirements, but we certainly can look into that, and certainly would look at other models to the extent the desire was to provide more guidance there.
All right. Well, you know, I would like to vote for the motion, but I'm still troubled by this, so I will propose a friendly amendment, which I suspect will not be friendly, with it, we, when staff comes back with us, that they take a look at the possibility of having some sort of guidelines about what exactly a labor peace agreement would look like.
I will surprise you, but I hope not shock you by saying that that is friendly.
All right.
But my understanding is that that's very dangerous territory, and I hope we enter it with caution.
My middle name is Danger, but that just... Is that friendly to the secondar?
It is friendly, though.
It is friendly to the secondar, and I think it's important information to have when we do get around to making a final decision about what the legal risks might be and what we can and cannot do.
And then my second friendly amendment is, to the extent that, one of our other concerns is we're seeing increasing vacancies on privately-owned property around the city, is that that is disruptive to sort of the fabric of the street, that you get enough vacancies and people start to think what's wrong there, right? And in the interest of keeping city-owned properties occupied, if, I would just like to suggest that we take a look at that. If we had a vacancy, where a longtime tenant had left for whatever reason, and another tenant was looking at that space, that we might allow, without a labor peace agreement, for a period of two or three months, pop-up tenancies, so that we kept the storefronts activated.
The challenge there, I think, is that for a business to move into a location owned by the city, there are going to be tenant improvements, and there's a huge commitment of capital for a restaurant to hire staff and do all of that, so...
We see that in the private sector, just short-term pop-up tenancies, where someone goes in and there's...
So, you're saying they'd move in, that they'd have no lease, and they could be selling Halloween gifts at Halloween?
Exactly.
That sort of thing. So, it wouldn't be a restaurant use, it would be some other use to keep the space...
Yeah, it could be.
I'm happy to explore that.
I just think that we ought to, but the city attorney looks like she has a thought on it.
I just want to be careful to be sure that we stay on the agendized item.
All right.
Pop-up Halloween shops, apparently, we're not on the agenda.
But this is a pop-up restaurants in restaurant space or a new thing.
You see them around town.
Yes.
You see them throughout the region.
Yes.
We could be specific, this is for food service businesses.
I'm happy to add the question to the list of things we're asking staff to explore when it comes back. I think I'd have some concerns, but I certainly am not closed to having information, so yes.
All right.
How many friendly amendments do you have, Mayor?
That was it.
Oh, good.
I was going to wrap it up. I have some hostile amendments. No, no.
Councilmember O'Day.
Well, I have to suggest, I mean, that line of discussion, and the fact that we heard that, you know, there wasn't a disruption of city revenue from the picketing suggests to me, maybe there are other strategies to assure the city's ongoing revenues from these last season. While I think the staff report was very good and did very good work of considering everything in an LPA, are there other strategies that the staff can bring back to us, like limiting our exposure in revenue, license revenue? What is the term for your, when we get a share of the restaurant's proceeds?
Trip on that.
The percentage?
Percentage rent versus a base rent.
Yeah, limiting our exposure in percentage rent would be a meaningful strategy to affect our, to protect our ongoing revenue stream, for example, right, from these types of disruptions. Are there other strategies like that, financial strategies, legal strategies, that the staff could provide us?
Yeah. Councilmember McKeon.
I always wait for the mayor's permission to speak, see? That's interesting additional information. I don't think it deals with the issue that was put before us by the motion made by the mayor and others back in March, which is that we wanted to look at labor peace. Again, I'm someone who actually loves having more information, so I'm happy to have staff explore that. I personally don't think that replaces labor peace, but anything that we can do to help stabilize city revenue is probably a good idea in the challenging years ahead. I think there's a reason why we do percentage leases. I think it gets the city more revenue than we would otherwise, and so we might be giving up more than we're gaining, but I'd love to hear about that, sure. I'm afraid we're now getting toward about a 3,000-page staff report and a lot of work for staff, so I hope we don't just keep adding ornaments on the tree.
I do have to ask one question, though. Did you have, in your, when you made the motion, any concept of a employee-sized threshold to which this would apply?
I didn't, and if staff recommends something, again, I'm interested in information. My concern with that would be that you end up with the manipulation of the size of the staff and how many people are full-time as opposed to part-time. What wasn't discussed tonight, and it's not on the agenda, I'll just mention it in passing, is that there's a dynamic where restaurants try to not have too many people who are full-time, because they get more benefits than people who are part-time. So, there are many, many dynamics that go into how many employees there are, and I would think that if we come up with a good policy, which I hope we do, that it will be scalable to almost any size operation.
All right. Mayorpro Tim Davis.
Well, I just want to say, I did ask that question, and Mr. Harris answered it by saying there didn't appear to be any manipulation among the businesses as to the number of employees, because they were, actually had more part-time and could have gotten under the number by using full-time. So, I think that's something that's having, worth having staff look at. I would agree with the mayor that I think that that's worth having staff at least take a peek at and seeing, is there some threshold that makes sense?
Let me turn to staff and say, is this something that staff can handle in the context of what we started out doing, which was a labor peace direction? I was out here saying yes to information all night, but I know you've got to produce it.
Yeah, no, I mean, the, everything comes at a cost. I'm not talking about a financial cost. I'm talking about, you have a lot of important issues on behalf of the community that you're expecting us to process. The more complicated it gets, the more difficult it is to balance the city attorney's workload and housing and economic development department and city manager's office workload. So, I think what you've proposed now is doable, will give us a couple of months to bring it back. The reality is we're, the answers to these questions are going to raise more questions.
They always do. Then I'm comfortable with how much we've put into this, and I hope we don't add more and can go to a vote pretty soon.
All right. Well, I suppose we're ready for at least some sort of vote on this. Councilmember McKeon, Mayorpro Tim Davis, would you like to summarize the motion for us to the best of your abilities?
Well, it's based on option four, with the change that the decision on what's arbitrary and capricious will be turned over to some non-political entity, that we will monitor what the impact of this has been over time, that we will have some attempt at making standards for the process on this, that we will try to come up with a process that limits the expense to the parties trying to get leases, and that we will look for additional information as asked for by various council members.
Does that sound right to you?
Right. Specifically, you know, what might be a source of a determination, what might be that standard for arbitrary and capricious, and also the question of whether or not it makes sense to impose some minimum applicability in terms of number of employees.
All right. I suppose for clarity, we could normally do this by voice vote, but I think for clarity, we ought to do a roll call vote.
So, the maker was McKeon, and the secondar was Mayorpro Tim, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemrich?
Yes.
Mayorpro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
No.
Councilmember O'Connor?
No.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes, so that direction is approved five to two. And with that, we will move on to the next item.
Next, we have item 7A, which is a second reading of an adoption of an ordinance setting forth regulations for commercial medicinal and non-medicinal cannabis uses.
It's a second reading, so we just need an emotion?
I move adoption.
All right. Move McKeon, seconded by Hemrich. Can we have a roll call vote?
Councilmember O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
Yes.
Mayorpro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes. And could you call item 7B?
Item 7B is second reading and adoption of an interim ordinance replacing the term "medical marijuana dispensary" with "medicinal cannabis retailer" throughout the city's zoning ordinance, Chapter 9.01 through Chapter 9.52 of Article 9 of the Santa Monica Municipal Code, creating a definition for medicinal cannabis retailer to replace the definition of "medical marijuana dispensary" to conform with the state law, removing certain requirements for separate regulation and rulemaking, and modifying the definition of the industry limited to allow the medicinal cannabis light manufacturing. And this is a second reading.
I move 7B.
Second.
All right. Moved by Hemrich, seconded by Vasquez. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Hemrich?
Yes.
Mayorpro Tim Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connor?
Yes.
And Mayor Winter?
Yes, so that passes seven to nothing. Could you call item 8A, please? Oh, we have to do the roll first, don't we?
Okay, so, let me first read this. So, item A is a special joint meeting of the city council, housing authority, and the redevelopment successor agency. And I have to announce that the redevelopment successor agency receives no compensation. The housing authority, as housing authority members, you receive $50 for this meeting. And now I'll take the roll. Commissioner Agency Councilmember McKeon?
Here.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember Vasquez?
Present.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember Hemrich?
Here.
Vice Chair, Chair Mayorpro Tim Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember O'Day?
Here.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember O'Connor?
Here.
And Mayor Chair Winter?
Here.
So, item 8A is the fiscal year 2016-17 year-end budget changes and fiscal year 2017-18 budget position and compensation changes, and you have three requests to speak, and I'll bring them to you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. Each year, staff returns to the council as part of our year-end closeout to report on how the city performed in relation to budget. Our review of budget performance helps us as we update our forecasting and plan for the exception-based budget process in the next couple of months. The city has ended the year with savings in the general fund and in other funds as a result of growth in some revenue sources and lower-than-anticipated spending. General fund year-end savings shown in this slide before you, the year-end savings and surplus totaled $10.9 million. That put revenues and expenditures at the end of the year within 1% to 2% of projections. Less than a quarter of the $4.5 million in revenue surplus is coming from ongoing sources, and these sources, transient occupancy taxes, parking facility taxes, and development-related fees, are partially offset by lower-than-anticipated increases in parking revenues and sales tax revenues. The remaining $3.5 million in surplus in revenues represents activity levels that we don't expect to continue in the long term, such as development-related fees from large projects, documentary transfer tax from the sale of large properties, and some one-time types of things like the return of unspent construction contributions from Expo. On the expenditure side, savings were $6.4 million, or 1.7% of the budget. Almost 90% of the savings was due to vacancies that occurred throughout the year, while other savings were coming from program spending. While our projections have been close to actual spending, we've noticed that our vacancy rate has held steady for several years. So, we have made adjustments to our current year budget and our future projections that are going to allow us to repurpose a portion of these savings each year. A small contribution of savings came from prudent spending on programs and accounting adjustments that were also offset, well, it was offset by accounting adjustments and an additional security spending for the Twilight Concert Series that was also offsetting some of the savings. In our non-general funds, where we have more unpredictability because of the nature of grant drawdowns and reimbursements, revenues and expenditures perform within 10% and 11% of projections. Overall, higher revenues and operating savings across 28 funds totaled $54.6 million. The majority of the 28-point, yes, the $28.6 million over-realization of revenue came from earlier receipt of federal transportation funds for the Big Blue Bus capital projects, from legal settlement receipts, from affordable housing litigation, and settlements reimbursed by the city's excess liability insurance. On the expenditure side, the year-end savings of $26 million was largely due to vacancies throughout the year and to the timing of grant spending. A large part of the savings, however, was due to operating savings coming from several different programs, again, throughout the 28 different funds. Some of the change, some of the savings were coming from fewer water conservation rebates that were issued, negotiated contract reduction in LNG fuel costs that were used by the Big Blue Bus, fewer outside repairs due to the replacement of 25 old LNG buses, lower-than-anticipated costs for shared use of the Hyperion Treatment Plant, we had delayed implementation of the new zero-waste program, and some delay in airport lease negotiations and the costs related to those. So, there are a lot of different programs that were contributing to that large savings number of $21 million. Our year-end savings allow us the opportunity to allocate additional resources to critical or emerging needs. Staff is recommending that general fund year-end savings and surpluses be repurposed for one-time initiatives addressing the outcomes of the framework for a sustainable city of well-being and the regional approach to homelessness, strategic goal. We're recommending the appropriation of $1.9 million for initiatives furthering the economic opportunity, governance, and place and planet outcomes. These include new technology and processes that will allow us to provide services in a more mobile, responsive, and efficient way, what we call total workplace, also for the kickoff of the Economic Sustainability Long-Term Planning Project and a resident and stakeholder study for the city's tourism industry. And finally, we're setting, appropriating funds for infrastructure maintenance at the promenade and for the Breeze Bike Share Program. We're also recommending that we set aside $8.9 million as assignments in our fund balance to be appropriated as needed to address local impacts of the regional crisis in homelessness. balance to be appropriated as needed to address local impacts of the regional crisis in homelessness, construction of the Civic Center Field, issuance of new bonds for Fire Station One, and future work on the Total Workplace Initiative. On the non-general fund side, savings will drop back into the fund balances of the 28 different funds, helping them build reserves and also supporting future capital projects in those funds. In our report, we're recommending some budget changes. On the left side of the screen, in 2016-17, adjustments totaled $13.9 million. This represents a $21.3 million increase in the general fund, offset by a $7.4 million decrease in other funds. So it's overall. Key changes include the transfer of almost $20 million from the general fund to other funds. This has no impact on the city's overall budget. It's mostly just being done for better tracking of costs. The appropriation of $4.2 million previously set aside for litigation expenses to cover actual spending, and a $1.1 million write-off of the loan from the airport to the general fund. We're also recommending a budget adjustment to reflect $700,000 for higher-than-budgeted costs for the Twilight Concert Series over the past year. On the right side of the screen, in fiscal year 1718, recommended changes include $8.8 million, or $8.8 million in appropriations, of which $6 million is in the general fund and $2.8 million is in other funds. These changes make staffing adjustments that result in a net increase in staff of zero FTEs. Expenditure control, increasing our expenditure control accounts for various departments to use. It's what people are able to take a third of their savings each year and use it on projects that are helping the department's mission. We appropriate of unspent funds to complete some ongoing projects that extended beyond the fiscal year, such as website design and development, the Pico Neighborhood Plan, and the Gateway Access Master Plan, among other projects. And finally, also, we are looking to set aside funds for the framework projects that I talked about in the previous slide. And also the appropriation of new SB1 gas tax funds that we are receiving this fall, and those will go towards our annual repaving program. So staff has several recommendations before council this evening, and I'll read them pretty quickly. We're asking you to adopt the salary resolution and a resolution to incorporate a proposed Road Repair and Accountability Act project. This is to appropriate the SB1 funds as required by the state. To approve year-end changes in fiscal year 1617 and changes to the current year budget and the 2018-19 budget plan. To approve positioning classification changes, review the year-end financial status, also to direct staff to create new engagement models to address homelessness so that we can start thinking about how we're, or start planning how we're going to be appropriating the homelessness set aside, and also to authorize a modification to the Santa Monica Travel and Tourism Contract, allowing them to spend additional funds on the destination perception study. And this concludes my presentation this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
We do indeed have a question from Councilmember Hemrich.
And if it were only one question, but it's not.
I was hoping.
But, but, sorry, but, but I think you know the answers to most of them. There's one that I didn't ask you about before, and it could be that I need to ask the city attorney about it, and that is the $4.2 million in excess litigation expenses. First of all, I assume that's related to the airport litigation and other major pieces of litigation where we're using outside counsel, is that right?
That's correct.
And, and have we budgeted in line with that for the next year?
We set, we are able to access our reserves for these litigation costs. Since we don't know how much litigation's going to cost, we do look at our reserves for that.
Oh, so, but...
But we actually have set aside specific amounts within our reserves that we've previously notified the council and was part of previous budget authorizations, I believe.
Yes, we have, we have set aside funds.
So, but the $4.2 million that you call excess, I assume is more than we previously set aside?
Well, if I understand correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, Gigi. There is extraordinary expenses due to outside counsel on major cases for which we have separately reserved above the kind of flow of liability litigation in each of the funds. So this is, this is above and beyond what we normally would budget for, the trips and falls, the, those kind of issues.
That's correct.
And so what we're saying is that this year, having anticipated that we would have these extraordinary and having reserved for it, we're now going to tap into that.
Okay, so, so it was reserved for, and now it's being appropriated?
That's right.
Okay. Now, you talk about the Special Revenue Source Fund with respect to the appropriation of $17.8 million for affordable, of affordable housing funds. So I have two questions. What's a special revenue source fund, and what's a source of the $17.8 million?
Okay, so the Special Revenue Fund, what we often call our FOR Fund, is basically, it's essentially, essentially a sub-fund of the general fund. It's another governmental fund. We do report on it right alongside the general fund in our CAFR. And it's a way for us to set aside funds that are restricted. We can restrict funds in the general fund, but these are funds that are, we want to have a little bit more, not, we have transparency everywhere, but those are a little bit easier to take a look at. And the reason why, so the $17 million that we transferred into the FOR Fund are redevelopment, they used to be redevelopment housing funds. When redevelopment was dissolved, we had moved those housing funds into the general fund. These were funds that the DOF had taken a look at and had said that we could keep. As we're trying to be a little bit more transparent in how much housing money we have in our trust fund, we thought that we would be able to, instead of having many different funds that we have, housing funds, and we wanted to put them all in one place. So that's one of the types of funds that we have in our Special Revenue Fund.
So, so are these GS, GSH funds as well as redevelopment funds?
Not the $17 million, but it's gone, they've gone and joined the GSH funds in the FOR Fund.
Great, thank you. Okay. So, so this is a separate set of funds, so...
That's right.
Good. And then, moving down to the Total Workplace Initiative, the $2 million, so, it doesn't really explain in this report what that is or why it's going to cost $2 million. I'm hoping somebody can explain.
Sure, and we can go into more detail if you'd like it, but let me just, for the benefit of all the council members, give you some additional information. This is over the three years between now and when the city services building is completed. It's an effort to make our workforce fully mobile, to make our city services fully digital. That is, that instead of having to come down to City Hall or fill out a PDF or fax in a form, that our citizens will be able to utilize city services with the same ease that they would order something on Amazon. It's also to train our staff for a more flexible and efficient way of doing business. It's also to prepare for what I outlined in this year's budget, that this year we held the line on staffing numbers, and in the next budget cycle, we hope through efficiency and attrition to reduce the city's workforce to a long-term sustainable level, given the increase in pension costs that we see in the out-years of our projections. So I can go into more detail. It also includes a small amount of money for mitigation of the noise impacts on city operations. We're going to...
From the construction, you mean?
From the construction. Did I, did I not make that clear? I may have misspoken, sorry. The impacts from the construction that's going to go on in the next three years, most of the time, we'll just live with it, but some of the time, we are going to shift some of our staff who are right next to the noisiest part of the activity to spaces in some of these shared workspaces in downtown. So we have a small lease that will give us some spaces there that people can relocate temporarily for an afternoon, or a day, or a week, depending upon the duration. So it's equipment, it's training, it's efforts to redesign some of our work processes, and it's digitizing our city services so that our workers are more efficient and our citizens get better service.
And you're coming back, I guess, later, in November, I guess, with a description of what this project is, is that right? Is that what you told me? Or is it...
I don't think so, no.
Okay.
I think you may be thinking of funding for the homeless.
That's correct.
And that, yes, I'm sorry, and that was the other thing I wanted to talk about, because it, when I first looked at this, I said $2 million for total workplace, $1.4 million for homelessness, but in fact, this doesn't represent our entire dollar commitment to homelessness.
No, it's $2 million over three years for total workplace. It's $1.4 million this fiscal year for homelessness. And Assistant City Manager, in response to your query, and thank you, we always appreciate when council members give us a heads up so we can give you a complete answer for the public, the Assistant City Manager has compiled some of the resources we already devote and that council has recently added to the resources we've traditionally spent on homeless prevention activity.
So take it away, Katie.
Happy to. So, in short order, thanks to the staff's hard work and responsiveness, we were able to put together some information. It includes proof of concept of ideas that we're trying to implement now and see if they'll work to make a big impact on the issue. It also includes some leveraging of county money. We just learned today that we were successful at getting a $70,000 grant, which is included in the dollar amount coming from the city, so we'll have that money to leverage in the county. The San Monica Police Department is spending close to $1.3 million, is also on the verge of reallocating an additional couple of officers onto the help team, so that includes the West Coast Care, which is field outreach, and the help team, which is currently six officers and one sergeant. It also includes the dedicated staff in our Community and Cultural Services Department, which includes a team of five folks who are dedicated to the homeless seniors and disabilities unit, the project homecoming expenditures, as well as the grant program, which is obviously external, given to nonprofits, $2.3 million to 10 programs across five agencies. And it's about 25% of the totality of our grant program. And then lastly, we've dedicated this year about, over two years, I'm sorry, this year and next year, including leveraging some money from County Supervisor Sheila Kuehl, as well as other county money, $1.35 million to support the homeless multidisciplinary street teams, which comes to $4.1 million as well.
Great, thank you. And I just want to say that I really appreciated this report, Gigi. I mean, I really read them, maybe most people don't, but I do read them, and it's really helpful to me to put it all in perspective, and thank you very much.
Councilmember Vasquez?
It was refreshing to see that, I guess, even despite our cost, our overrun on the Twilight Concert, we still ended up with a surplus this year, is that right?
Well, generally in the general fund, but not in that line.
No, but, but, but moving forward for next year, I'm hoping you're looking at some alternatives.
I believe that we have, we're coming, other staff, not me, are coming back to council on December 12th to talk about the future of the Twilight Concert Series.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions of staff? Any further discussion? Or should we move into motions? If we are moving into motion...
We have the public.
I totally forgot about that, sorry. The jet lag is kicking in big time. We do have three requests to speak. First, we'll hear from Denise Barton, followed by Xena Josephs and Sean Landris.
Let me begin with some general questions on this item. First, why would you make the accounting process so complicated for laypeople? Isn't anyone in the community supposed to be able to easily interpret documentation included in the staff report? Not have taken accounting in college or be a CPA? Or would the new file names be the way of hiding missing money? Then, to me, it appears there are a lot of transferring funds within different city accounts and back, which might leave one wondering if you've been shuffling funds to make some accounts look better than they really do for credit rating, while depleting other accounts for grant funding, maybe? In addition, there are way, there are way, there are ways, in addition, there are way too many costs, there are way too many costs explained to ways being higher than anticipated, which again says you make it a standard practice to low-ball additional costs. As it may appear, you continue to do an attachment B. Regarding personnel, I still have a problem with the Assistant City Manager starting salary, not only because it was padded for pension, but due to Elaine Polczek also being interim city manager. So might it appear that we are paying salaries for two city managers, although one is slightly less? Then how much more money is going to go toward the homeless? But the city isn't really interested in housing the homeless in Santa Monica. Another example would be the city using over half of the block grant funds, or half a million dollars, to renovate a 14-story building in Venice, with the deal that three units, as they become available, to go to Santa Monica homeless. So then Santa Monica continues to say that they don't have enough money to house the homeless in Santa Monica. In the end, if the city has any money it didn't expect, then why is it all going to increase in the city's already bloated budget in your special interests, instead of resident taxpayers getting some kind of financial relief, if only for a year? Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Josephs.
Thank you. I'm speaking only for myself tonight. I saw in the three-page budget review summary provided to the public that $7.5 million is being set aside for capital projects, so I'm hoping that will bring up to $8 million of funds set aside for the Civic Center sports field. At the October 12 Coastal Commission meeting in beautiful downtown Chula Vista, city staff stated that we have, quote, "we have set aside $8 million," end quote, to build the sports field. But on the other hand, I've heard that only $3.3 million has actually been set aside, and that tonight's staff recommendation only brings the funding up to $7. My memory, which could be wrong, is that the city immediately set aside half the construction cost of the Santa Monica College early childhood lab school as soon as redevelopment funds were at risk. So I'm hoping that full funding for the field will be set aside as soon as possible. Regarding the Coastal Commission approval of the field, the staff there asks only for a design concept, not the final design, which the CIF soccer field diagram that you have would probably satisfy, plus a fairly simple application form. Intending though it might be, we probably don't need to hire David Beckham as a consultant to help design a world-class living building challenge soccer field, you know, this CIF field would do. So thank you very much.
Mr. Landris?
Good evening, council members, and go Dodgers.
I am here speaking on my own behalf, but I do want to note that the Social Services Commission, of which I'm a member, unanimously supports the homelessness-related budget requests, and in particular, the expansion of street outreach teams, which really are proving to be successful. I'm also very glad to hear about the new $70,000 grant from the county, as that kind of grant had been predicted in the joint session that Housing Commission Chair Michael Soloff and I coordinated with our colleagues in February, where Supervisor Kuehl's homelessness deputy Molly Reisman said that funds will go to those cities that have made investments historically and that are most prepared. So clearly, that is Santa Monica. But again, speaking for myself, I do want to stress that although we are moving, it appears that we will be moving forward with these budget items tonight, anticipating next month's study session, in addition to more funds, we really do need policy creativity and operational innovation. Developing regional partnerships will require taking a fresh look at how we can collaborate better with the county, with LSA, with the city of LA, and other cities, looking at the new pooled voucher programs, looking at the new MOUs that are available. And just as importantly, we also need to distinguish clearly through budgeting and policy and operations between homelessness and crime. They are not the same thing, despite what folks may read on social media. We can, in the words of our city manager, relentlessly and compassionately engage in the work to end and prevent homelessness, and be equally dedicated to the public safety of all who live, work, learn, and play here, however they are or are not housed. This is about protecting everyone here in Santa Monica, including people who are homeless, and I hope that we will find the capacity to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that closes the public hearing, and now the matter is before us. Councilmember Hemerich.
So I'm ready to move. Can I move one and two together?
You can.
Oh, good.
Let me tell you what you can do, which I've been told, not that I'm making it up. We need a motion for the Council Housing Authority and Successor Agent to approve the changes to the 1617 revised budget as detailed in Attachment A, and to approve the changes to the fiscal year 1718 adopted budget and fiscal year 1819 budget plan as detailed in Attachment B.
I was gonna do that, because that's what it says here.
Okay.
I move we approve changes to the fiscal year 2016-2017 revised budget as detailed in Attachment A, and approve changes to the fiscal year 272018 adopted budget and fiscal year 2018-2019 budget plan as detailed in Attachment B.
Well said.
Second. Thanks. I can read.
All right, moved by Hemerich, seconded by O'Connor. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Agency Councilmember O'Connor.
Yes.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember O'Day.
Yes.
Vice Chair, Chair Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember Hemerich.
Yes.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Commissioner Agency Councilmember McKeeun.
Yes.
And Mayor Chair Winter.
Yes.
Okay. So next, I move that we adopt a resolution establishing classification and salary rates for various positions as detailed in Attachment C.
And?
And approve the position and classification changes detailed in Attachment D.
Second.
All right, moved by Hemerich, seconded by Vasquez. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember McKeeun.
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hemerich.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connor.
Yes.
And Mayor Winter.
Yes.
And next, I move that we adopt a resolution incorporating a project funded by SB1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act, detailed in Attachment E. Second.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, moved by Hemerich, seconded by Vasquez. Roll call vote.
Councilmember McKeeun.
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hemerich.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connor.
Yes.
And Mayor Winter.
Yes.
And now I move we direct staff to proceed with creating new engagement models, including pursuing regional partnerships, issuing requests for proposals as needed for street outreach teams, and refocusing existing resources to address homelessness.
Second.
And?
And?
Oh.
Can we do that?
And authorize a city manager to negotiate and execute a first modification to Services Agreement 10391 in the amount of $197,000 with Santa Monica Travel and Tourism, a California-based company for destination perception study.
Second.
All right, once again, moved by Hemerich, seconded by Vasquez, and roll call vote.
Councilmember O'Connor.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember Hemerich.
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember McKeeun.
Yes.
And Mayor Winter.
Yes.
And with that, we will adjourn our special joint meeting and resume to the regular business of the City Council, and a court could call Item 13A.
Item 13A is request of Council, I'm sorry, of Mayor Winter, that the City Council consider removal of board and commission members who are not in compliance with ethics training. And this is something that you brought forth when we did the annual appointments back in June, and then when we did them in September, we had a lot of members who weren't in compliance with the ethics requirement. And when you sent a letter out, you and Mayor Pro Tim back in September, and at that time, we had 11 people who were not in compliance. I am happy to say, as of last Friday, everyone is now in compliance.
Go Tim.
All right. So I think that-
The letter was powerful.
The threat of a spanking did its job.
All right, well, I'm pleased to hear that report, that we all now have all of our members of our various boards and commissions in compliance with the ethics training. I think it's worth noting that every member of this body has been in compliance for quite some times.
That is correct.
So that means everybody who serves this city is now compliant with the ethics training. So, yes.
Might I suggest, I mean, we could have just pulled this off the agenda, since as of Friday, everybody was compliant, but I for one suggest that we leave it on, just to reiterate that it is our policy that those ethics trainings are mandatory, and that without further discussion, the City Council will in the future consider the removal of anybody who does not fulfill that required training.
Yes, I mean, I would suggest, I think the message has been sent loudly and currently to everybody on our current boards and commissions, maybe when we have our annual meeting and we have that introduction for new members of boards and commissions, we could make it clear that this is the course we've chosen to pursue. That make sense? All right, thank you for that, and Item 13B, please.
Item 13B is request of Councilmember McKeeun, who represents Santa Monica and Westside Cities Council of Governments on the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission, that the Council direct staff to ask the California Department of Fish and Wildlife for an extension on the public comment period for the Biona Wetlands Restoration Project draft environmental impact report until March 1st, to allow participating agencies, advocacy groups, and members of the public sufficient time for meaningful input. And you have one request to speak.
Councilmember McKeeun.
So, Council, I go back a long ways with the Biona Wetlands, as do many of us, and I served as Santa Monica's voting delegate on the Westside Cities Council of Governments, which subsequently appointed me to a state body called the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Corporation. I was a bit surprised to hear at the meeting of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Corporation last Thursday that that body will not be reviewing the environmental impact report for a proposed restoration of the Biona Wetlands because of a shortage of staff time to do that, and that therefore, the review is going to be sort of handed off to various other groups, including possibly cities, but also volunteers. The draft environmental impact report is 8,000 pages, and so what various groups have asked for is an extension of the time to review that report. Now, I'm gonna make, after we hear from the public, a couple of small changes to my request. It turns out, there are actually two lead agencies, so besides the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, I'll be asking us to write to the Army Corps of Engineers. And I also found out that while the request for an extension was till March, it's actually for 120 days from the current deadline, which makes it March 24th, not March 1st. That'll put us in parallel with Los Angeles Councilmember Mike Bonlin and others who are writing for that same extension. So once we hear from the public, I'd be happy to make that motion.
All right, we do have one speaker. Kathy Knight is having two minutes donated by Xena Josephs, who I see is here, so Ms. Knight, welcome. You have four minutes.
Yeah, I brought you some handouts. Did you get them?
We did indeed, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, my name is Kathy Knight. I've been volunteering since 1992 to save the Biona Wetlands and represent the fabulous wildlife that's out there, to protect them, get the land saved. We did save it in 2003, and we were excited about a restoration, but the proposed restoration, which the process has been going on for over 10 years now, off and on, brought out this document September 25th, and as Councilmember McKeeun said, it's 8,000 pages. The public was only given 45 days to read, analyze, and comment on it. The Department of Fish and Wildlife, one of the lead agencies, gave a 15-day extension to the day after Thanksgiving, but that's still not enough. There's a lot of people that have been volunteering, like I said, over 25, 30 years, to save this last, part of the last 5% of our coastal wetlands left on the California coast. It's very, very rare. Half of it was built on by Playa Vista, and, you know, so we have, we were able to save 645 acres after many, many, many years of working at it. So we want, we would, we want this, the time to be the 120-day extension, because we are citizens, we don't have salaries, we don't have staff, we're gonna be looking at this in our free time, and to, it's very complicated, and to look at it, and then analyze it, and then comment, it takes a lot of time. So we would really appreciate this. And I gave you a handout with some more information. We're having, there's only one public hearing being held on it November 8th in Marina Del Rey, so I hope if anybody's interested, they come to that. And I gave you a copy. We're working very hard to daylight the Biona watershed. This is one of the pages I gave you. We took a tour up there. It starts up in Griffith Park, Ferndale is where the Biona Creek starts, and we are working very hard to daylight this water, make pocket parks along the way as it comes down to the ocean, and clean up Biona Creek, and bring the water back into Biona Creek, into the Biona Wetlands. That would be a much better and less expensive way to do it than what's being proposed. And then there's a picture of the wetlands in '95 before Playa Vista built one half of it, and some more information, and I want to invite you all, if you, to come to the Open Wetlands Day, the LA Audubon does it, the first Saturday of every month at the wetlands, and between 9:00 and 12:00, they take different tours out, and it's fabulous to go out there and see this precious resource we have. It's really wonderful. And so, let me see, I'm sorry. So, so basically, that's basically it. The proposed restoration is unbelievable. The Biona Wetlands is a seasonal freshwater wetland, and what they're proposing, they have four proposals, three of them are to dig up and bulldoze really deeply these wetlands and make it into a saltwater wetland, and with big berms, 20 feet high around a lot of the wetlands, you won't even be able to see them. And a lot of the animals out there, frogs, and birds, and other animals, and there's endangered species out there, species of special concern, it will take away this freshwater habitat, and we're turning all the wetlands along the coast, Bolsa Chica, Malibu, into saltwater wetlands. We need to save freshwater wetlands for the birds that migrate from Alaska down to South America and back, and the local wildlife. So, for, anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Knight. I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
Given that we're, if this goes forward, we'd be communicating with the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, would it be helpful to also communicate our concern about this issue to our state legislators so that they could, in addition, share their thoughts?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then I just wanted to clarify that public hearing is, as you said, 6:00 PM on November 8th, it's at Burton Chase Park at 13650 Mindanao Way in the marina, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, we have, all right, I think I-
You covered my points.
We're trying to get a couple more public hearings, but, you know, that's the only one they have scheduled so far.
All right. Did you have a question for Ms. Knight, or were you gonna get in? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Knight. Appreciate your passion.
Kevin's done a great job at the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. He's always promotes democratic processes there for the public, and it's really, I'm so happy that he's on that commission.
And I will allow you to use more time than you're normally allowed to compliment a council member, because it happens rare, rarely.
Very much appreciate that and the passion that Ms. Knight shows on this issue. I'm not gonna be asking the council to take a position, but again, I would say that if people want to find out more about what is proposed, Wednesday, November 8th, at Burton Chase Park in Marina Del Rey is the place to find out, from 6:00 to 8:30. What I will do is ask the council to direct staff to ask the California Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the US Army Corps of Engineers, and our state legislators to grant a 120-day extension to November 24th on the comment period for this draft EIRD EIS.
From November 24th.
From November 24th to March 24th, yes, thank you. Yes, there've been a lot of dates floating around here.
Yes.
The hearing is November 8th. The original deadline was November 24th. The request for an extension would take it to March 24th of 2018.
All right, so that's moved by McKeeun, seconded by Hemerich. I believe we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstentions? So that carries unanimously.
Thank you, Council.
Which brings us to Item 13C.
Item 13C is request of Councilmembers Vasquez, Hemerich, and Mayor Winter, that the council allocate up to $7,500 of discretionary funds to the Santa Monica Arts Foundation to enable 200 Santa Monica High students to attend the Los Angeles Theater Centers in, I'm sorry, I can't pronounce this, in Suentro de los Americas performances on November 11th and November 16th, 2017. The funds will cover the cost of the theater tickets, bus transportation, and meals for those students, and you have no request to speak.
It's actually in Quintro, but you're pretty close.
Was I close?
So Councilmember Vasquez, would you like to-
Sure.
Some clarification?
Real briefly, I, one of the things I want to make clear is that I don't want to punish the Santa Monica Arts Foundation for this, because I actually asked them to be the nonprofit to funnel this money through, because originally, I was looking to support just the theater, but I don't think we can cut just the check straight to a theater production. So, but Mikey Myers was real supportive of this, to support us in this endeavor, and we're targeting, basically, it's about 85% of the students that were taken from Santa Monica High School are on free and reduced lunch, so it's the low-income folks over there. Moving forward, I hope we get the support of the council to make this happen. It's about 200 students we're gonna be taking.
Yeah, when I ask you about this, as I understand, most of these kids are getting free instruments-
Yes.
-from the Ed Foundation, so they're income qualified.
Exactly.
Yeah. Councilmember Hemerich, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yeah, I want to second.
Councilmember McKeeun.
I just want to say that the clarification that this is for students who have need is a very important one, and using the council contingency funds.
All right, so it's moved by Vasquez, seconded by Hemerich, and we are spending money, so we'll need a roll call vote.
Councilmember McKeeun.
Yes.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Hemerich.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Davis.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Day.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Connor.
Yes.
And Mayor Winter.
Yes, so that passes seven to nothing, so that money will be on its way, and a court call the next item, please.
Item 14 is public input. Public comment is permitted only on items not on the agenda that is within the subject, manner, jurisdiction of the city. State law prohibits the city council from taking any action on items not listed on the agenda, including issues raised under this agenda item, and you have three requests to speak.
All right, we'll hear first from Denise Barton, followed by Art Casillas, and then Jonathan Foster.
Let's go back to my building. I asked the Leasing Office Manager Jared for a copy of a notice placed at everyone's door except mine, the reason for which I know, but in just glancing at it, there was wording I questioned, so I asked for a copy of it. Jared immediately became defensive, saying, "I'm not supposed to talk to you." But because he had said hello to me as he was getting off the elevator earlier, I thought rather than bother someone who wouldn't do anything-
rather than bother someone who wouldn't do anything until Monday, being my perception from previous action, I thought I would just ask for an extra copy, since it was posted earlier in the day. In the end, after the copy was posted on my door that day, I, I realized I probably took the wording out of context the first time I glanced at it. And another copy of the notice was left on only my door today, so who knows? Here, I'd also like to address Rick Cole's earlier action of chasing me after, chasing me after closed session, to correct me that Santa Monica had at-large elections before 1947, and did I care about that? To which I told him to say, to say something, but just in case he chose not to say something, that's why I am now. And so all of you sitting up there, I understand the point I was saying, instead of arguing over dates, as Rick Cole has, my point was Attorney Kevin Shankman interpreted as it was adopted in 1946, but it doesn't matter when an intentional racist act occurs, it's invalid. So by that interpretation, it doesn't matter if it was adopted or extended to include city council in 1946, 1947, or before, because it's still an intentional racist act, invalidating it. And why would Rick Cole and you be fighting so hard to keep a racist act in place? Are legal costs over $1 million to the taxpayer to defend this racist act? I can only see these and other actions of the city to fall in line with criminal activity of organized crime. Thank you.
Mr. Casillas.
Good evening, Art Casillas. Speaking of real crimes and true criminals, in Santa Monica Daily Press newspaper, September 22nd, 2017, city manager Rick Cole said, quote, "He'd like to meet at people's homes or churches," end of quote. Not in an open-agenda city council where laws, decisions, complaints are truly appropriated, funded, and televised. Now, on February, October, on Friday, October 20th, 2017, Santa Monica Daily Press newspaper, police lieutenant Rodriguez, spokesman cried out, "New laws!" Within the last four years, but mysteriously homeless issues do justify police being in downtown Pier Beach Palisades and Palisades Park, leaving us dumb residential tax-paying victims to suffer with little or no police protection. The problem, the city council members only see extra dollars in the eyes of tourists at the beach pier promenade in Palisades Park. You can also say, "Police work pays better over time since crime, they knowingly turn their backs on us, you now won't rehire 120 physicians to save money." Are these willful endangerments, risks on our lives and properties, while you're hiding all the Department of Justice, while you're hiring all the Justice Department lawyers in your criminal scheme or cover-up? Are you looking to hire a new crooked police chief to, again, send most police pier promenade in Palisades Park? Now, what about heroin, methamphetamines you allow and enable to sell behind my brother's house across from rent-controlled apartments? You turn your backs on us, and God turns his back on you. Check how many city councilmen and people and policemen have died of cancer without God's help. Let no man play God in God's kingdom, for he or she will certainly pay. Thank you.
Mr. Foster.
Hi, I'm Jonathan Douglas Foster, and thanks again for having a microphone on. I was gonna talk about the DACA and the Police Department again, and of course, Joshua was killed by a dreamer in Texas, and Kelsey was killed by a dreamer in Naples, Florida. And I was like, well, I don't need to really stand up for them, because I, just a few hours ago, as I came over here, I was like, well, it's personal, if this happens to me, you don't care. $25,000 for them, Francis was a Marine, he went into the, to the World War II as a 17-year-old, did you ever give $25,000 to Francis? He's dead already, if you gave it to him, he's dead, can't give it to him. $25,000, did you get head-to-toe body armor for the Santa Monica Police Department yet? So we don't lose one. $25,000 on your Santa Monica City Council cams, did you get the council cams yet? Did you ride your bike to work? See, if this happens to every 64-year-old female in Santa Monica, would that finally be enough women sodomized to end this criminal support of child trafficking? You know, if they were sodomizing the girls and hitting them in the head with a hammer, that's what they did to that girl. You know, your daughter's up in San Francisco, last time I knew, what if the bullet hit your daughter and not Kate Steinle? You creeps. I, I, I will, if I see anything happening to you, I'm going the other way, just like you did to me, and I'm still alive. And I don't like you now, at all. Because you just killed me, Jonathan Douglas Foster. I'm dead!
And that concludes the public input. Councilmembers, do we have any requests adjourned in the memory of anyone? Councilmember McHill.
I do. I'd ask that the council adjourn tonight in memory of Anna Weisman Collins, who was probably one of Santa Monica's oldest residents at 102. Anna had lived in Santa Monica for 77 years, she was a loving wife for 52 years to her husband, Joseph, and a devoted mother to her sons, Aaron and Mark. I mentioned that Anna Weisman Collins was 102 when she died at the end of last month, well, just last week, she would have been 103. Anna Weisman Collins will be remembered.
Thank you for that. Any other adjournments? We'll see, none, and that concludes our meeting, and we are adjourned, and we'll be back here November 14th. Everyone have a happy Halloween, and I suppose I have to say, go Dodgers.